My check, my check. Microphone check. My check, my check.
I think we're good.
I grabbed my, uh, my real estate phone.
Instead of... Is it your city phone?
It's in my city phone.
Jill, Jill should have.
That's all right. I remember. I mean, it's pretty easy.
The presentation, the debate. You are. Hey, Mario. How are you?
...
How was your trip?
Pretty good.
How's yours? Good. I came back on Monday. I assume you came back Sunday.
Came back Sunday.
All right, we have a quorum. Let's go ahead and get started, please. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to ask everybody to please silence their phones and beepers if they still have them. Good evening. This board is comprised of seven members. Four members of the board shall constitute a quorum, and the affirmative vote of four members shall be necessary for the adoption of any motion. If only four members of the board are present, an applicant may request and be entitled to a continuance to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board. If a matter is continued due to lack of quorum, the chairperson or secretary of the board may set a special meeting to consider such matter. In the event that four votes are not obtained, an applicant, except in the case of a comprehensive plan amendment, may request a continuance or allow the application to proceed to the city commission without a recommendation. Pursuant to resolution number 2021-118, the City of Coral Gables has returned to traditional in-person meetings. However, the Planning and Zoning Board has established the ability for the public to provide comments virtually. For those members of the public who are appearing on Zoom and wish to testify, you must be visible to the court reporter to be sworn in. Otherwise, if you speak without being sworn in, your comments may not have evidentiary value. Lobbyist registration and disclosure. Any person who acts as a lobbyist must register with the city clerk as required pursuant to the city code. As chair, I now officially call the City of Coral Gables Planning and Zoning Board Meeting of November 1, 2002 to order. The time is 6:01. Jill, if you please call the roll.
Robert Behar.
Here.
Claudia Mido.
Here.
Julio Gabriel. Luis Revuelta.
Here.
Vinnie Torre.
Here.
Chip Withers.
Here.
AB Eisenstadt.
Here. Notice regarding ex parte communications. Please be advised that this board is a quasi judicial board, which requires board members to disclose all ex parte communication and site visits. An ex parte communication is defined as any contact, communication, conversation, correspondence, memorandum, or other written or verbal communication that takes place outside a public hearing between a member of the public and a member of a quasi judicial board regarding matters to be heard by the board. If anyone made any contact with a board member regarding an issue before the board, the board member must state on the record the existence of the ex parte communication and the party who originated the communication. Also, if a board member conducted a site visit specifically related to the case before the board, the board member must also disclose such visit. In either case, the board member must state on the record whether the ex parte communication and/or site visit will affect the board member's ability to impartially consider the evidence to be presented regarding the matter. The board member should also state that his or her decision will be based on substantial competent evidence and testimony presented on the record today. Does any board, does any member of the board have such a communication or an and/or site visit to disclose at this time?
No.
No? Thank you. Swearing in. Everyone who speaks this evening must complete the roster on the podium. We ask that you print clearly so the official records of your name and address will be correct. Now, with the exception of attorneys, all persons physically in the city commission chambers who will speak on agenda items before us this evening, please rise to be sworn in. Zoom platform participants, I will ask any person wishing to speak on tonight's agenda item to please open your chat and send a direct message to Jill Menendez stating that you would like to speak before the board and include your full name. Jill will call you when it's your turn. I ask you to be concise for the interest of time. Phone platform participants. After the Zoom platform participants are done, I will ask phone participants to comment on tonight's agenda item. I also ask you to be concise for the interest of time. We have the approval of the minutes of October 12, 2022. Has everybody had a chance to review those?
Yes. Make a motion for approval.
We have a motion for approval. We have a second. Any comments? No? Call the roll, please.
Claudia Mido.
Yes.
Luis Revuelta.
Yes.
Vinnie Torre.
Yes.
Chip Withers.
Yes.
Robert Behar.
Yes.
AB Eisenstadt.
Yes. The procedure that we will use for tonight, first we'll have the identification of the agenda item of Mr. Caller. Then we'll have the presentation by the applicant or agent and presentation by staff. In this case, it'll be staff. Then we'll go ahead and open for public comment, first in chamber, then the Zoom platform, and then the phone line platform. Afterwards, I'll go ahead and close for public comment. We'll have board discussion, motion discussion, and second of motion, if appropriate, board's final comments, and a vote. Mr. Caller, if you please read the first item into the record.
Item F1, in ordinance of the city commission mending the City of Coral Gables zoning code, Article 6, Landscape, Section 6-104, Landscape Requirements for Public Rights of Way to Amend Planning Height and Various Other Provisions, Providing for Repealer of Provisions, Servability Clause Codification, and Providing for an Effective Date, Item F1, Public Hearing.
Thank you.
Good evening. Sodamikarada Development Services Director. You actually saw this item, I believe, one or two meetings ago. It went back to the Landscape Beautification Advisory Board. They voted in favor of it. There was a lot of discussion, but they voted in favor of it. We're bringing it back in front of you today. I just want to clarify that. I know there was a lot of discussion last time that you saw this item, but what this item does is it only allows the minimum height requirement to be reduced so that you don't have to have 15 or 16 feet as a minimum height for a tree, which the code now requires. So we're bringing that down so that it's easier to get trees from the nurseries. That's the extent of that modification to the zoning code.
Thank you.
Hi, and I'm Deana Bell from Green Space Management, Assistant Public Works Director. If there are any questions.
I want to know what happened. What changed from the last time that this item came to now? So what are the differences? Are there any differences? Did anything change, or are we seeing the exact same item?
I believe it's the exact same item. The request from the board was that we take it to the Landscape Beautification Advisory Board and get them to weigh in, which we did. And now we're back to you with the same item. The Landscape Beautification Advisory Board, as Ms. Cabrera said, had no opposition to it as written.
About our concerns that we raised last time, were any of those addressed in the discussions with the Landscape Advisory Board? I think we were talking about losing the canopy and all that. If I remember correctly, I don't know if there was.
There was a lot of discussion on how does this change the look of the streets and the trees? And, you know, did we have... But this doesn't really change that. The city has, and Deana could go into it further, a tree succession plan, which has been in place for years. It has nothing to do with what's in front of you today. That does allow the city to not have to, for example, only plant oaks or mahogany, which are what is typically readily available at the 16 feet. But this doesn't really change that tree succession plan.
You know, I don't, I don't see how it can change the landscape vistas of our streets. If you have a street with oak tree, oak tree, oak tree, then all of a sudden someone plants four palm trees between those oak trees. You don't think that's going to affect the visual perception of that street?
So, excuse me. I have some images. Do you want me to...
Yeah.
No, no, I, you know, images, I'm just, I'm just asking you your opinion. I mean, I understand there's an ordinance on the books, which I totally disagree with. And I disagree with, with not take, don't take it personally, but, I mean, I, since we had this item, I visually in my mind, every street I went down, driving throughout the city, and I drive Granada, I drive Riviera, I drive Hardy, I drive all the streets, and I'm visualizing what planting between these majestic trees will be in the right of way.
Right, and I think Deana does have some images, but it doesn't change the process to plant something in the right of way. So it would still be reviewed by staff, the same staff that's always been reviewing it.
I understand.
And they still get the input of the adjacent, of the property owner in front of it. So if it's not appropriate, then it would not be approved.
Well, I know, but appropriate by who?
That's what I was going to say. Now, there is the conversation of whether Mr. Merrick, George Merrick, had this idea that one street should only have a certain type of tree, but that was abandoned by the city years ago. That idea of the street landscaping in the right of way was abandoned years ago.
Years ago meaning when?
How long has that tree succession plan been in place?
The tree succession plan, that's the document. I believe you have copies of it in your packet, right? I think it was written in 2014. And basically, there was a consultant landscape architecture firm hired. They did an assessment of all the tree species in Coral Gables, and they basically put a document together that said, "Street tree species are already diverse and mixed throughout Coral Gables just by the natural evolution of the city." It's very difficult driving around to find streets that are only one species of tree today. Our practice in green space management, when we're going through swales and removing trees and deciding what species to come back to plant again, we naturally look at the specific location and find the right tree for that location, and we also get the residents' weigh-in. So today, this does not change our practice. We, we currently plant different tree species on streets and have always been since I've been here working at the city, so.
So is it fair to say, as, as you had said before, that you're coming here just to lower the height of the required tree, nothing more?
That's correct.
Nothing more is changing?
No.
You know, we put in a minimum because, I mean, I, I don't like to see somebody come in with a six-foot tree.
What is, is it a 12-foot minimum, or is...
If we have a minimum, I, 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 you know, and we know what that is, I think it'd be more comfortable because...
Well, the, just the bottom line issue is when applicants are coming with new homes or projects and the plan reviewers are approving street tree planting plans, it's very difficult sometimes to get good, interesting trees, 15, 16 feet and above. So all the time, the developers want, well, I found these beautiful satin leaf trees. They're only 10 feet tall. And as long as they meet the visibility triangle requirements, which is creating a window of visibility between 30 inches high and eight feet, and as long as the branching is more than seven feet above the sidewalk or above the road, we always allow it because we want to see different species that would work for that location.
But before, there was a requirement of 15 feet?
Right now, it says 15 or 16 feet. And so it's very difficult to approve a development when they're not allowed to put trees in that are 14 feet because that's all they found available in their nursery.
Deana, I think, I think I will be okay with that, but what I don't want to do is not put any, any minimum and they come in with, you know, an eight-foot tree. And it may not affect the visibility to triangle, may not affect any of that. You know, and, and as from the development point of view, you know, yes, we want to see something that is compatible and something different, and it doesn't always have to be oaks or mahoganes. You know, it could be there are many multiple, you know, different tree species that are beautiful. But, and you're right, it's, it's hard to get them 16 footers from the get-go. But, but what we don't want to do is, you know, and you know how it is. If, if you allow something, then it's going to be difficult, you know, to come in with a six-foot tree and say, well, you can't do that.
Well, you know, we have professional landscape architects and arborists that are reviewing all the landscape plans. We have a review process just to make sure that doesn't happen, and that's our current practice.
But if you don't give me a minimum, I will challenge that. Because if you don't give me a minimum, you cannot enforce me to do something. So I, I, I agree with what you're doing, you know, lowering the mag, you know, the minimum of 16 feet, but I think we should establish a minimum that is, you know...
I think the definition of a tree in the zoning code now is 10 to 12 feet tall. And for planting inside the residential properties, trees define as that.
Would you say that a 12-foot tree of any species is easily accessible? I mean, maybe not 16.
Depends on the species.
You know?
Depends on the species.
I think that, the way I'm reading this, this is for trees that are maximum of 25 feet that you're trying to use those trees. It's what it says in this ordinance, right? So if you're trying to get a tree that only grows to 25, and it's maybe when you find them at the nursery, they're 10, or eight or 10, that's the starting number, then those are the trees have to be bought for that particular brand to succeed, right? So I don't know, different trees have different starting points for that particular...
One perfect example is the bridal bells. You know, those, to me, I think they're beautiful trees, but you cannot get them mature.
Correct.
I understand, but, you know, I think there's a minimum that you could, you know, you could find that it would be compatible with what we're trying to do.
I mean, I get what you're saying. You don't want to get something in a seven gallon and it has a little, you know, and then you say, okay, that meets the criteria. So I, I understand what you're, you're trying to get to. Is there a way to curtail that?
You could probably, I think the clear trunk clearance of a tree is more important than the overall height in the urban area because we're talking about visibility and clearance over sidewalks and roads for the most part.
Is there, is there like a minimum that you could say all trees of this sort of 25 max could fall under, say, no tree less than six-foot clear wood? Is there, is there a number that you could kind of...
I mean, the truck, if you establish a minimum trunk height, you're going to, you're going to match whatever height that is, you know? And the visibility to triangle, if, if you're pulling out of the driveway, you're right, it has to be between 30 inches and, I don't think, eight feet. I think maybe that could be lowered to like six and a half feet. It cannot be, you cannot have anything that is above 30.
That's right, it cannot be more than 30.
Right, but then you cannot, if you have a shade tree, that, you know, you, you have to have visibility. So the bottom of those branches cannot be less than seven feet or whatever.
I think it applies when you, you're fixated on a particular tree, let's pretend. And you say, well, the only thing I can find are trees this size, and that's what tree I want, and there's nothing I can do about it, and you're sort of stuck. If that's the tree you want, having to get a small tree.
Happens very often.
And that's, that's what I think is sort of...
Let me ask you a question. Chip has a concern about mixing trees within certain areas or it's already established. But I want to be clear in understanding, that is not changing with this. In other words, the establishment of keeping the way it was, or the trees, or the way we see it, that will continue?
Right now, since 2014, the tree succession plan encouraged diversity of species. There are certain streets, and I drove around for three hours the other day taking pictures, trying to find streets that had one species only. It's difficult. You've got coral ways live oaks. You've got Columbusus ficuses. Granada, you've got large black olives.
Hardy.
Um, Hardy, you have black olives. Anastasia, you have coconut palms. I think those are the only ones I can think of that are still today one species. All the other streets have already been mixed species throughout the years.
I know when the city went ahead and replaced trees that were dying in the swale and so forth, they gave property owners a choice
That's correct.
of certain trees that they wanted.
We, that is our practice.
I'll give you an example. Santa Maria, which is one of the oldest streets, is black olives. Okay? And, and black olives are not great trees, right? I mean, you could agree with me.
Staining.
And, and, you know, really are, and you can't put your car there because it will be staying completely. Forget about the driveway. I don't care so much about the driveway, but, you know, the cars. But look, I, if you think this is the right way to go, I guess, you know, I, I will, you know, support it. I think, I still think that we should have a minimum.
Chip, let me ask, let me ask you a question. I share with your concern. But my understanding is that this process has been ongoing from 2014. I guess we didn't know that.
I, I know.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
How do we...
I know. I'm going to say no, and I'm voting against no because I think the ordinance is a terrible ordinance. That's just how I feel. I mean, and, and I'm not challenging you, but I suggest you drive down Riviera, Granada. I can give you a list of 15 or 20 streets. Now, granted, it might break where there's a major street, like the south side of Riviera is different than the north side of Riviera on Hardy Road. The north side of Granada, where US1 is, and the south side of Granada is differently. But the majority of our streets have single trees, North Gables, South Gables. I don't see very much planting at all in any of the swales. In fact, I saw almost no planting. So I don't know how effective this ordinance was in 2014 because I really haven't seen the benefit of the ordinance in the past eight years. If you can show me some, some beautiful photos of where people have taken...
If you can show me some, some beautiful photos of where people have taken advantage of this ordinance in the past eight years, I, I, I would love to see what you have.
There's some photos. Okay, so do I flip this myself or does, okay? Okay, so, um, back up a little bit.
Okay.
Just a few images here. Look at this one, mixed species stopper trees on the left side. You can see they're sixteen, eighteen.
You lost me? Is that a, is that a median there in the middle or what is that?
This is a, um, a residential street in North Coral Gables, just east of Merrick House. On the right side, you can see big mature live oaks in the swale. You can see a lot of vegetation in the swale already from the Merrick House. On the left side, you see a swale that's been planted solid with wort ferns at the bottom and small tree species called a stopper. That was done by the resident as part of the swell planting package. So this kind of thing is already.
And how long is that block? Two, two block, one block long maybe? I'm, I'm talking about boulevards. I'm not talking about little areas stuck behind the Merrick House. I'm talking about full blown Granada boulevards, Columbus boulevards, Riviera. That's, that's what I'm referring to.
The swell planning package is a current public works permit that's being implemented all over the city. This is just one example I saw driving.
That is Toledo Street from Coral Way to Valencia. I guess that's where.
Okay, so where is this one now?
Um, this is a black olive street that I found in North Gables near the Biltmore.
Wait, is that a, that's an oak tree though, no, on the left?
There, that's exactly, um, there're no, it was very difficult to find a, a street that had one species without others already being mixed in already. You know, when a tree falls or let's say the city has to take it out because of a lightning strike, we get the homeowner involved and allow them to help choose. A lot of homeowners like different species. They might want a flowering tree. They might want another type of native tree. They want something very resilient to hurricanes. They want something that doesn't stain. So we end up replacing the black olive street with other species anyway. That's our current practice. Here's another mixed species photo in the North Gables. You can see, um, pretty mature live oaks on the left. And on the right, we have a native stopper tree that are smaller because we have power lines above. So we want to have the option to plant trees below power lines. And we can't use the live oak on the right side because it's too large to go under the power line. So we have this condition, um, many places around the city where we have power lines. Here's a mixed species on Alhambra Circle. The Alhambra Circle Road median is a great example of all different mixed up trees. You, you see coconuts, you see ficus and live oaks all here in this image.
Okay, but the neighbors didn't plant any of that stuff, right? That was all city plant.
Well, some do in their swales.
Neighbors planted those palm trees, did they?
No, that happens to be the Coral Gables Country Club. But, but when people are developing new homes or doing renovations as part of their building permit, they're allowed to plant different species. Here's the Country Club Prado. Again, very mixed up on, all over the Prado. I think what people really love here, it's like a tree park with different species and the ability to bring in some amazing flowering trees.
Are people allowed to plant in Country Club Prado in the center?
No, that is a city maintained property in the center, but they're allowed to plant in their swale on their side.
On their side, but not on the city linear park?
The linear park, um, the city plants those trees and maintains that. Here's a great example, again, on the Prado, you have live oaks on the right side in front of the residence. And then you have a smaller flowering cassia tree on the left side. Just to get variety and have some flowering trees in, in the environment.
How do you deal with areas that are, that are specific? For example, what Chip was mentioning, there's certain streets or boulevards that are very specific that have not been mixed. Have you looked at possibly keeping those areas that have not been mixed in uniform?
Yes, we do respect that already. And like I said, there are very few of those streets. Coral Way happens to be a Dade County street. We don't, we don't plant trees on the Dade County swale. That's their jurisdiction. Columbus is ficus, the big banyan, Indian banyan. There's just no room to plant anything under those trees because of their large root system. So they have stayed a single tree species street.
I think this needs to be split into two things because we're talking about the initial height of a tree as opposed to the trees that are allowed, which I think is what they're constraining themselves with. So in this code verbiage, I'm going to take the word height out. I'm going to read this without the word height and see what it says in. " exceptions to planting for tree varieties whose average mature height is twenty-five feet or less may be approved by McGreen Space Management." The approval of trees under twenty-five feet may be approved. Forgetting what's starting, is that already an approved thing? Can you, can you install trees less than twenty-five feet? So if this is clarifying the beginning height, you take the height of the beginning away, then the rest is you already have the right to install trees that are twenty-five or less, correct? So, so a tree that's twelve, fifteen feet in full height, you already do that? You're already doing it in some cases?
Well, it says, "street trees are required to be sixteen feet height."
But when they're not, okay, so if, if you were to go with a tree that's twenty-five feet or less in its mature form, you'd have to find it at sixteen feet and then you can go with it. So if you can't find sixteen feet, those trees that fall under those small tree things are almost impossible to find. So all you're saying is I want to be able to use this option of trees that are twenty-five feet or less. And I think that goes to the point.
Yeah, because by default, it's sort of.
That's really the all and bottom line. If that is already a fact, then the only issue is how much of it can happen by virtue of the trees or two, never going to be finding the trees, right? So it's.
Yes, that's exactly what it is.
It's just going to be more of it or less of it.
We have a policy that we really haven't seen it because you can't find the diversity. But otherwise you would have the diversity, so that's.
So all you're saying is more allowing of that opportunity to happen.
It's allowing to go to a, to a, to a smaller tree.
That those trees can happen. So you're promoting, you're promoting that option?
Yeah.
Or not promoting the option?
I don't, I don't know.
Or helping the option?
You're allowing it. You're allowing to actually do what the plan was. But if you don't like the plan, then obviously you don't want to lower the height, right? Because by default, you're getting rid of one because.
This is the grease that helps the other part get in there. And I think without this, you, you don't have the options of doing it as much.
That's right.
Any other?
The bottom line is that Chip's concerns, which are with the, the way the code is written right now, are not being addressed or are not affected by this amendment.
What, what I like, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment before we continue further discussion. Is there anybody that we have in the chambers that would like to speak tonight on this item? No? So there's nobody here? Anybody on Zoom?
No.
Anybody on, uh, the phone platform?
No.
At this time, I'll go ahead and close it for public comment. Let's continue.
I wanted to ask Chip, just to clarify, your problem is with the way this section of the code is written right now, right? It's, it's not really with the amendment. The amendment is a mathematical.
Well, the amendment makes it a lot easier for this to move forward. Right now, I, I present to you that it hasn't moved forward in any significant way in the past eight years because it's very difficult to meet the terms. This allows, you know, and again, in all fairness, the photos you showed of Country Club Prado, you've got a huge boulevard in the middle before Andrew and it became a burn zone for the city of Coral Gables that, that was nicely, you know, the city hasn't replaced what it was supposed to. The little stretch on whatever.
Toledo.
Toledo. But I mean, maybe I'm not clear on this. If you take, if you take a, a boulevard like Granada Boulevard from Byrd to the Fountain and people started putting up trees in between the black olive trees, you don't think that would change the entire look of that boulevard? If people started putting, you know, twelve foot slash pines or, or palm trees or whatever in that boulevard area? And again, it's totally subjective on what the Green People Committee allows this to be built. There's no standard as to what tree can, you only have a height that you can, as long as they feel that it's a nice tree to put there, it can go there. You could put a, you know, you could put anything in there. So my point is, is that what the city wants to see? The city wants to see their, their boulevards filled up with trees in the swales. Is that what we want? And I suggest that most people don't. I mean, I, I bet you if you put it out the referendum tomorrow and ask the citizens of Coral Gables, do you want your boulevards to be filled in with trees? I would say ninety percent of them would say, no, we don't. Now, I could be wrong.
No, I think you're going to be ninety-nine percent.
Yeah, so I, I don't know why we're even here talking about this because I don't think it's what the people want. Some people might, they want to build new homes and put stuff, but most of the people I don't think want you to start filling up their swales and their naval sw, and their neighbors' swales with trees. I, I don't. I mean, they get mad when people plant bushes in their swales, much less trees. So that's, that's just my, my feeling on this. And I, I don't, I don't know. I really haven't seen anything from two thousand and fourteen. The pictures you had were nice, but that, all those are kind of anomalies as to what the main focus of this can cause.
You know, Chip, what I, when I see this, is in new developments where the, the trees are going to be on the right of way, you may not be able to find a sixteen foot bridal bell, if you want to use that. You're allowed to go to a smaller tree. And you know, and it may not be in a neighborhood. It may be more in a commercial area. I, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, the project, for example, by Merrick Park, which, you know, for the most part, all those are new projects. And if you have, you know, a, a, a set of a street that has already have oaks, I think you should put oaks on the other side. I, you know, but if you don't have anything, you're going to set the precedent, you know, and you want to go with something that is not, you know, available. I, I understand. To me, I agree with you. I'd rather keep the consistency throughout. I, and that's what's the, you know, the beautiful thing about our streets. You drive by and you see, and I don't like, I personally don't like black olives. And when I drive on Santa Maria, you know, it's all black olives. But it, it looks nice because it's consistent. To put something else on the swale, you, well, I don't think you could do it because whatever you put on the swale has to be, you know, one, you have to give the city a whole harmless, I think, because you cannot put it on outside of your property. Inside your property, you could do whatever. So I, I don't think the issue is, you know, to have diversity in trees. I think they're coming in for, for a minimum height of a tree instead of being sixteen to allow for less. My concern is, we, if we don't put a, a minimum size, I know we'll get, we're going to get a six foot tree.
Yeah, because it's going to be challenged.
Yeah. You know, I, I do not want to do anything that takes away the requirements to keep the same consistency as, as you mentioned throughout. I, I think that's, I a hundred percent agree with you and I'm not going to support anything that is deviating from that. You know, I'm not in favor of lowering from sixteen to no, no, you know, minimum size. It's more difficult. You're right. It is more difficult to find a six, you know, sixteen footer, but if you're doing a big development, hey, a few sixteen.
It's more difficult to find the diversity in the lower heights. So you would be by default getting more diversity. So if that's definitely not what you want, then that's not this, you know.
Explain to me the need for diversity in the neighborhoods of trees. What is, is it a aesthetic thing? Is it just a feel-good thing? I mean, I, I'm not quite, I understand what you're saying. But what does diversity really, really do for the neighborhood? It changes the look?
Well, first of all, it could be an aesthetic thing. Diversity in aesthetics would be like the images I showed of the Prado, for instance. You get beautiful pops of color with flowering trees. You have native trees to attract different wildlife. You might have some exotic trees that are really unusual and that's an aesthetic diversity. And then you also have the environmental diversity. It's important to, to have environmental diversity within a city because if any one tree species has an illness or a sickness or a blight and dies out.
Well, the palms.
We want to make sure we have other species close by it to take over for it and fill in the gaps. So you've got to think of that. So there are two different types of diversity.
See, to me, it would look more like the Grove.
Chip, if I understand you correctly.
Like Coconut Grove. Coconut Grove, to me, has a diversity of species within blocks that are just mixed in throughout than I see in.
Let me use Miracle Mile. I mean, we're all familiar with Miracle Mile. It was professionally designed by landscape architects. The tree species are mixed.
Yeah, but there's also certain areas that are predominant with a certain species. And I think that's, that's, that's an issue that I'm having, um, for certain areas. While I do think that there are areas that mixing would be appropriate, I also think there's certain areas where they would not be. But since, if you've had this from two thousand and fourteen going forward, how do you, how do you adjust that? One of the things that I see that Chip says is now by lowering it, you're going to be able to implement it. So now we may be seeing it more where we didn't see it before because you weren't able to implement it. But I, I agree with Robert also that you should have a certain height minimum. You shouldn't just allow any height. If somebody comes and demonstrates, and I understand that you say you got to have seven feet or whatever amount of feet from the sidewalk or so forth for somebody to walk by. But you're allowing people to challenge that, I think, without being specific.
What I'm finding in my house, which be behind, in my property, I have tabebuyas. I like trees with yellow flowers. They flower very timidly because the three black olives, which I love in front of my house, don't allow enough sunlight for these trees to develop or to bloom. So I, I'm, I'm just thinking now of the logistics. And I, I don't have a problem with what you guys are proposing. And I can understand what, what Chip is saying, that by lowering the height now, you're really going to open the door for this diversity that he's making a good point, that there are certain areas of the city that should not have that diversity according to some of us. So my questions are, if, if we're going to allow diversity, what's going to happen to that diversity that is between trees that are maybe forty feet in the center or something like that, that are not going to allow these new lower trees to bloom or to grow crooked because that's what they do. They just basically bend over to go get the light. Number one point that I wanted to ask, was there any studies on that? Number two, is the amendment reacting to certain streets that should be kept the way that I think most of us think should be kept? Or is the amendment silent on that? This, this can happen anywhere.
Yes.
I think it can happen anywhere.
Yes, the way it's written, it's anywhere.
I'm just thinking, I mean, some of the concerns that we're talking about in the streets that we keep mentioning, there's probably six, ten that should, in my opinion, should be addressing the amendment, saying, you can't do this in these areas. This is the context that we want to keep. This is the landscape aesthetics that we want to keep. And I do think that certain thoughts should be given to the fact that some of this lower planting, in all likelihood, it's going to grow bent, go look for the light and there's going to be lost some of that formality. And there is, I'm not a landscape architect, but I, I know what's happening to me, uh, in my own house. And, um, I, I don't have a problem with that happening. I, I live in Castile. I don't have a problem with that in Castile or Asturias and, you know, you start naming streets. But I think when you're talking about major boulevards, I, I think to address what Chip is saying, it, it would be good to address that because it seems that some of the other things that he's concerned about, not wanting to turn Coral Gables into blank another city, you already can do that, right? That's already allowed. So I, I think that's probably a nice conversation for another, maybe we need to add one of those things that we add to this motions to bring us something back. But I don't have a problem with what is being proposed. I have a problem when it's in boulevards, as, as Chip has been pointing out. And I have a, a logistical question of what's happening on my own house and wondering how is that going to, what's going to be the end result?
But here's a, so this is really the freeing up of the ability for the staff to allow this. It's a freeing up of this, right? It's really more like, okay, you got more of, of this option on your table.
It allows it to be implemented.
That's right. So this is the.
That's right, so this is the concern that now you've sort of allowed this to really start to flourish. But what I ask is, in all these conversations, one thing that hasn't been asked is, staff, from my personal experience in past history, has to weigh in and has to make the call and has to give you the permit. So, it all comes down to what you will allow to answer his question and his question and all these questions. Really goes down to, would you be the one letting this go this direction? Or strict, or more strict towards this direction? So, that really goes back to, what is the expectation upon staff?
Right.
Actually, you do the reviews for the plantings in the right-of-way. So, if a tree's not appropriate because it can't grow in that environment because it's under the canopy of a bigger tree or exposure's not right, she wouldn't approve it, but of course, that would be at the staff.
Or to his comment, it just doesn't feel like that should be in our neighborhood or doesn't feel like that should be on my street. So, is there some of that weighing in?
Absolutely.
Is that something that?
Every, every street tree that's planted in a swell in Coral Gables, the permits required, a public works permit to plant in the swell. So, those are all reviewed.
And how do you answer to the two or three major concerns about the loss of the tradition, I guess? How would you address?
Well, Sarami, there's nothing codified.
And we spoke about this a little.
There's nothing codified that mandates consistent street trees in the code.
Right, and I think that when I spoke with Deena, because I wanted to understand cuz I watched this last time and I saw that there was a real concern about, you know, how reducing the height, which to us is a simple amendment to the code, is a big concern because it's gonna change the look of the streets. And it may very well change the look of some streets depending on what the arborists feel that is appropriate and would best, would thrive in that area, would look good in the mix of the species. You know, I've talked to Deena a lot, I like gardening and I pretend like I'm a, but I'm not an arborist. I don't know like how to mix different types of species and what grows best under what and all that. But she does, and that's the idea, that she has to approve it.
So, do you like this idea? Do you think it'll look good?
I think on a case-by-case basis.
I'm asking, but you can't go case-by-case, that's the problem.
I do, I think it looks really beautiful when you go through and you see that all of a sudden there is, you know, the silk, whatever it's called, the seva tree with the pink flowers in the middle of.
It blooms twice a year, but go ahead.
It does, but it has a beautiful trunk, right?
So, the other fifty weeks of the year is just a stick.
It has a really beautiful trunk. I mean, Fairchild Tropical Gardens probably has more species than anybody and I don't think that it's ugly in any sense, it's a beautiful.
So, what's a setback without a sidewalk?
What is a what?
What's a setback from the street without a sidewalk? If your home, like on Granada, where there's no sidewalk, how close to the street can they plant?
We, we, minimum six, seven feet off the edge of pavement.
So, you've got a forty-foot setback there on those homes? So, you allowed them to go six feet from the street then?
Well, depending on the tree species. It's a small tree.
You said by code or by experience or your skills?
The code right now says six feet distance from driveway approaches.
From where, I'm sorry, from where?
Six feet.
From driveway approaches.
Distance from driveway approaches is the closest a tree could be planted in the swell. We respect that.
No, I'm talking about from the edge of the street.
From the edge of the street, we respect six feet.
So, it's six and six is that triangle?
Minimum, depending on the tree species. If someone says they wanna plant a live oak, in my review, I would say you need to be at least twelve feet away.
So, for example, if someone wanted to plant six gumbo limbo trees on Granada Boulevard in front of their black olive tree, six feet off the street, would you allow that?
Of course not, that's not.
What would you allow to be planted on Granada? Palm trees?
Well.
I'm just, I'm, look, you're the gatekeeper, you're the subjective gatekeeper on this, which I honor your profession and I honor your expertise.
Continue to say that we all always get the residents' input of the person living in front of the home and make sure that what is in front of their swell, in their swale is compatible with their whole landscape design.
Not the street landscape, but with their landscape.
It doesn't have to stick with the street species necessarily. But we look at their whole landscape and make sure it's pleasing and environmentally going to work. The, you know, certain tree species have to be placed together to be a successful landscape.
So, what would be acceptable on Granada if it was in some, I'm just trying to get an idea. With black olives, they don't like anyway. I don't know why people would black paint, plant black olives if they're already there. I'm talking about what trees do you think would go on Granada?
I mean, there are hundreds of varieties of things that could work. But under black olives, it's very difficult, you know, as Mr. Revolta said, very difficult near those big black olives on Granada. So, naturally, I think naturally probably Granada stayed a monoculture because of that reason. If that makes any sense.
I don't know.
I have a question. Deena, I have a question for you. You mentioned that you always get the homeowner's input, right? So, has there ever been a situation where you've gone out to a neighborhood and got the homeowner's input and done something different than what the input was from the homeowner?
Now, we always work with the homeowners to do what's appropriate aesthetically. Of course, they ask our opinion because we are professional arborists and horticulturists and we might know the species that's more appropriate better than they do, so.
I understand, so like for instance, Mr. Revolta likes trees that flower, have yellow flowers. So, if somebody wants a tree with yellow flowers and you don't think it's appropriate, has there ever been a time where you've said, oh, I don't, you know, we don't think it's appropriate, we're the professionals, and then it's been different than?
Of course.
So, we listen to the input, but we don't necessarily, in every case, do whatever the homeowner wants.
Professional opinion.
Right, okay. And then Chip, I had a question for you. Listening to your concerns and also the other comments, do you feel that if we put a minimum height, would that appease you at all or not at all?
Well, I mean, to me, this is an enabling ordinance to allow something I disagree with. And that's the only reason I'm voting for it is because it just enables something that I don't think is the right thing to do. And listen, this is just my opinion. I mean, you guys obviously, I honor and respect you more than you think I honor, respect you, but I do consider it, so. This is, you know, just my feeling, this enables something to move forward that I don't. Now, would a minimum, yeah, I mean, a minimum would work.
That's not gonna change the species.
That's not gonna change the species.
Exactly, right, exactly.
Okay, does anybody like to make a motion either way?
Is there a consensus that at least we should request that part of the addendum should clarify that there are certain boulevards and avenues that should keep the current context that they have now? Because I think that was one of the main concerns that Chip has brought up and I think most of us share on that.
How do you go about quantifying that at this point? I mean, we could, we could say a couple of.
I don't think you can.
Boulevards or streets.
And the more we talk about it, the more I'm agreeing with my colleague over there.
And I wanted to say something. I think that, I think that as a board, we did our due diligence by sending this back to landscaping, I think in hopes of having some of these questions answered. But it seems to me, and you tell me if I'm wrong, that we have the same concerns and the same questions that we did the first time this item came before. So, and I don't think anyone feels comfortable because of certain, you know, certain things. It's not that we don't wanna work with you, but there's still certain items or parts about this that like Chip says enable change.
Qualifying the boulevards and the streets, we do that in a lot of municipalities when we're dealing with zoning issues. Right-of-ways that are greater than fifty or sixty or seventy feet that affect zoning issues the same way, I think, could be approached. I think, I don't think it's difficult for them to identify based on what we're saying, which are the major streets and boulevards that have a context that we're concerned about. Maybe I'm in the minority here and thinking that is a very simple task. Is it that difficult?
We don't have that information tonight.
Oh, no, no, I know that.
So, I think it's important for you all to know that this actually was brought to staff by the commission. It wasn't staff-initiated. It was by the commission because they do wanna see the diversity. And when staff is asked, well, you can't get that with the heights limitations that we have. So, if it's a no, then, you know, it's a no. I mean, that's perfectly fine. I mean, staff is gonna go in the direction that the commission ends up going. And your opinion to the commission will obviously help all the other members make a decision on what you all don't not like, which is becoming very clear that you don't like the diversity.
You know where I could see a diversity? If you were creating a new little park area or something that you could be independent. But I think I agree with Chip and most of the other comment. If you're on a street and you wanna keep it consistent. And I would not like to see on a street, it doesn't have to be a boulevard, that you have whether they're oak trees or their black olives introduce a, what do you call it? A tababoya, a yellow tababoya, because, you know, so you gotta be consistent. So, what I don't want is for this to open up that possibility for it to happen. If you had a park setting, well, you could do, you know, like you showed me some of the photographs. Diversity, I'm okay with that, but not along the streets. I think that for me, I, and don't, didn't think I was gonna say this, but I'm agreeing with my colleague over there.
Hey, he said he respects you a lot, you know?
I'm gonna try to make a motion, it may flunk.
I was about to do the same. Yes, I'd like to, I've heard everybody's comments and I really respect the time that you've taken to go over this for us once again. But I really like the way that things look right now and I share the same concerns or feelings as my colleague here. I'd like to make a motion to deny.
So, you like to make a motion to deny as presented?
As presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Chip, second that. Any discussion?
I'm gonna vote opposite, but just to clarify why. I think that staff has had this opportunity to do this. And I don't know that this really opens the floodgates, in my view, in my view. And I think we have to give them a little bit of the tools, but at the same time, the respect that they're gonna do what I think Coral Gables has already been doing. I go through this rigmarole a lot and they're tough and it's not changed in the time that I've been working here and I don't think it's gonna change. And to add more layers to the city and to, I think we're, what you guys do already puts a lot of burdens on the restrictions that we have to have. So, I think this is just giving you a tool to work with, so.
Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Motion is to deny, second by Chip Withers, Louis Revolta.
I'm gonna vote no, but I would really like to at some point see the whole ordinance come back to try to address some of the concerns that we have and I don't know how to do that.
Vinnie Torrey?
No.
Chip Withers?
Yes.
Robert Behar?
I'm gonna vote yes.
Claudia Miro?
Yes.
ABS and staff.
For the same reason that Vinnie stated, I feel confident on staff and I'm gonna vote no. So, we have a tie vote. I've become an expert, I've become an expert on tie votes.
Can I retract my vote?
Let me just say this before you, if I might. The board has an opportunity at this point, any motion is in order, to try to reach a consensus. May I make a suggestion of a possible amendment that might encompass some of the concerns for your consideration? And I won't be hurt in the least if you say, why are you getting involved in this? So, one of the things, one of the things I was going to add was consideration should be given to the unique aesthetic of certain streets where a species in height predominate.
I like that. I like that too.
So, I don't know how staff feels about it, but if the, but that, but isn't that what's happening now?
I think staff does that anyway, but codifying it would make it really clear.
Yeah, this was brought by commission, not staff. I just wanna repeat that. Yes.
Can we, can we, since that tide, we need a new motion.
Need a new motion or if you can't come to anything but a tie, then it goes without a recommendation?
I would, I would offer a new motion that incorporates that language.
And incorporates your minimum?
On a minimum, I don't know what the minimum will be, I don't know if, if, you know, I may not need a minimum, with that, maybe sufficient, that language not to have a minimum.
I would be in favor if there was a minimum height. I'm concerned without having any minimum height at all.
All right. Without setting a number, why don't we trust staff to come up with a minimum when they take it to the city commission? But the amendment would have a two-part amendment, two, uh. Then I'm gonna make a motion, send out a new motion that we leave it up to the staff with, what was the wording you put on, Mr. Collier?
The wording I would add to, at the end of an anniversary of the urban canopy, then I would say, provided however, consideration should be given to the unique aesthetic of certain streets where species in height predominate.
And for staff to recommend?
Now, what I would suggest you do is maybe your recommendation to the commission is, you've added that language. If you feel that a minimum height should be given, but you don't have a height, then perhaps as part of your recommendation, you recommend to the commission that staff should consider a minimum height.
I'm gonna make the motion, you wanna second, you wanna second and you make the friendly amendment?
Yes.
So, Robert? You're gonna make a new motion?
Just, I asked Deena because.
Minimum height, maybe I can, again, the clear distance from the ground should be the minimum height, not the overall height of the tree.
The clear trunk.
And you're comfortable with that? Because I don't want us to leave here and you thinking that we're gonna go in and say the minimum height is twelve feet and then that's not.
Was it clear, what would you think is a good minimum clear?
If there's a sidewalk where pedestrians have to walk seven feet minimum clear? If there's no sidewalk and if it's in a swell?
Why don't we keep it seven feet consistent?
I'm sorry, didn't we say earlier that we don't want somebody to put up a six-foot tree? So, one foot more, we're comfortable?
No, 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 that trunk.
The clear trunk, not the overall height, the bottom.
Yeah, but let me make a comment. I know that on the street that I live in, the city went ahead and planted certain trees that were way below that height.
Because of availability problems.
And they have grown and they look beautiful and they're growing.
They will grow. That's why we're here. That's the bottom line of why we're here, right there.
All right, so we made a new motion?
In all different directions, but that's the bottom line of why we're here.
Can we be clear on the motion, please? So, the motion is to approve with the condition that Craig went ahead and stated. But do you wanna a minimum, what do you call it, a clearance trunk height?
Clear trunk is the technical term.
And is it your desired that the minimum clear trunk should be seven feet?
I would make it eight, just to be absolutely sure.
Eight feet?
Worst that can happen is that they buy the tree and they clip the branches and the tree is there. So, I would make it eight feet and eight feet would should work on the swell, should work on a driveway, should work on a pedestrian. And that would be then the second part of the.
Okay, so, I think the amendment would read after the end of the sentence, provided however, consideration should be given to the unique aesthetic of certain streets where species in height predominate. Further, that the minimum trunk height should be?
Clear.
Clear trunk.
Clear trunk height.
Measurement from.
Are you getting this, Jennifer? Clear trunk height should be eight feet.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. I second.
Any other comments?
I just have a question. So, you're not saying that you have to plant a tree that matches? I don't really understand how that changes the landscape to be on this because you're still gonna.
The major thoroughfares that you and us have been talking about. It doesn't control the minor streets. It does to the minor arteries. I think it will be, you know, throughout the city. Because anything on the soil has to be approved by the city.
But that's what some of us are saying, we're trusting staff.
If I'm in my property, inside my property line, I could do whatever I want. Like you did, you put your pink, your yellow tababoya and there's, there's a, on the public right-of-way in the soil, it has to be approved. And so, they have to give the consideration to the existing trees.
But she says she does anyway. You do that anyway, right? You do that anyway, right?
That's right.
So that's what I don't quite understand what this, I mean, it's your amendment and your, but I just don't, you're, but I just don't know what that really does. Because you're not saying you still have to plant an oak tree or you still have to plant a tree that matches.
But right now, you don't have any specific, to their discretion. Right? It's another case, up to now, it's up to, you know, and somebody could come in next year and say, you know what? I'm allowed the yellow tababoyas on the right-of-way. And I think this may accomplish it, to be specific.
Right? The only thing is, I don't see anything in the criteria that addresses the concern that, that certain people, that you all believe that there are certain streets where really it's oaks and it's this height and it's this height. So this directs staff to say, when you consider the trees...
To address those areas.
Consider those streets where the species in height predominate. And it doesn't mean that they're mandated to do that, but it does, it does require them to consider it.
Which they do.
And the other thing is...
Which she does, because she makes sure that it's appropriate for the street, that it works well with the other species, but it does not mean that she wouldn't allow something else.
The other thing is, of course, now we're putting a minimum eight feet on a clear trunk height. Requirement. Which means if you take a tree, if you take a tree that's eight feet, you just cut it all the way straight out and plant a trunk so it'll grow later. Is that a lie? Just curious. I don't even know.
Probably killed the tree then, but it'd be a dead tree.
So does the city have to abide by the same rule of eight-foot clear? Because that Florida One standard is what, six feet on an oak tree? On a, when they rate their trees? I think it's six feet. And I think the city has Florida One standards as their requirement. So do you know that?
If you're over the street, but if it's not over the street.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
If it's over the street, but if it's not over the street, they're in a clearance requirement.
In the swale, would the city have to now build?
Raids and standards is what you're referring to for trees?
So the city would only have to put a tree in minimum of eight feet as well? Is this applicable to city planting?
Eight-feet clear trunk means the foliage is taller than that.
Yeah, what he's saying is, does this apply out to the city-planting trees? And yes, it would.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and call the roll, please.
Chip Withers?
Nope.
Vinnie Torre?
Yes.
Louis Rivalto?
Yes.
Claudia Mido?
No.
Robert Behar?
Yes.
ABAs and staff?
Only took an hour and five minutes.
Was that three?
Four, two.
Is it four, a recommendation?
Yes, minimum. The minimum vote for a recommendation is four, which is what you have.
So we have a four to two.
Thank you.
OK, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item G1. In accordance to the City Commission of Coral Gables, Florida, providing for a text amendment to the City of Coral Gables Official Zoning Code by amending Article Two, Zoning District, Section 2-402, Zane Freeman Miracle Mile Downtown District Overlay to promote quality design to reduce the size of property required for conditional use review for parcels facing Miracle Mile, providing severability repealer, codification, effective date. Item G1, public hearing.
Good evening, Jennifer Garcia, City Planner. So this is a sponsored text amendment from the commission. And they're interested in lowering the requirement of requiring a conditional use process. Conditional use process is what you're used to. All, most of all of the applications used here are conditional use. It requires DRC, Planning and Zoning Board Recommendation, and Commission for Approval. So right now, the requirement for Miracle Mile, for any property on Miracle Mile and really anywhere citywide, if you're over 20,000 square feet, you're required of the conditional use process, which requires, again, DRC, Planning and Zoning Board, four architects in between there, and also Commission for Ultimate Approval. So this is lowering the requirement just for the four blocks that are Miracle Mile. So there was a change to some of the language that I printed off for each of you. I think there's one extra copy over there. If you go to page two, that's kind of the bulk change, in my opinion. And that's just clarifying that whatever conditions the commission imposes that would deprive the property to be less than what they're allowed to have, which is 3.5 FAR.
Is this ordinance 2022, or where it's supposed to be again?
Yes. It's item G1, it should be found right on the corner.
I'm sorry, say again what you just said about the FAR? I didn't quite understand.
So right now, you can develop on Miracle Mile with a maximum 3.5 FAR or 3.5 FAR if you're doing med bonus. So this language that is, I think, red in your, is it red or is it purple?
Blue.
The new language, it's blue? OK, it's blue. That clarifies that whatever the commission imposes as far as conditions, as far as the conditional use process, can't deprive that property owner of what they're allowed to build, which is 3.0 FAR or 3.5 with med bonus.
Can you tell us, how does this come about?
Well, there's some proposed developments on Miracle Mile and the commission felt that, the commission in particular, felt that the commission should have more input on those properties on Miracle Mile. So that's kind of what spurred this.
But are we, by not having to come before the Planning and Zoning Board, that gives more power to the commission?
No, it's just making less quote-unquote "by right." And I should actually go back a little bit. Miracle Mile is required to have remote parking. That's the only part, only place in the entire city that you're required to have remote parking. And if you remember, remote parking is also a conditional use. So that's why the commission felt that it was reasonable to request that the minimum lot size to require conditional use could be reduced to 10,000 square feet. Because in reality, if you're developing a property at 10,000 square feet or more, you're going to request the remote parking anyway.
So you're saying that we're going to lower, you know, to 10,000 and you require conditional use?
Yes.
But they don't have to come to the Planning and Zoning Board?
But are we not making it?
No, but they would have to go to the Planning and Zoning Board. Because that's part of the conditional use process.
Are we not making it more difficult?
You're making, the thought is that they're already difficult to get something approved because of the remote parking requirement, which is already requiring conditional use. So you're adding additional review, additional, additional fees, but they're going through the same process. Because as you know, most of these projects have accompanying requests that just kind of travels with the, with the project.
It seems to me that we're making it more difficult for every property that comes in Miracle Mile. And I would like to hear maybe from, from an attorney to see what, but it seems to me that this, what it does, creates more, more obstacle to develop on Miracle Mile.
Yes, and you can definitely see it that way. The commission sees it as an extra set of eyes, that they can be able to see more projects on those four blocks in Miracle Mile. But definitely you can see it as, other point of view is that you're requiring an additional requirement.
Which commissioner you said brought it forward?
Commissioner Anderson.
Do you have further presentation or?
No, that's it. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thanks. Before we go ahead and bring an attorney or somebody that would like to speak on it, do we have any speakers on this item?
Yes, we do.
Can you call the first person, please?
Greetings. It's good to see you all.
Sorry, can you state your name and address?
Thank you very much. My name is Rip Holmes. I'm a Miracle Mile property owner.
Can you state your physical address, please?
35 Sedonia Avenue, Coral Gables.
For the record.
I offered a joke with you all that I'm one of the few people with an inexpensive apartment. I may have the least expensive apartment in Coral Gables. Took a long search for Zilla. Anyways, I'm confused, like I think you are. I didn't do my homework on this item. And, so I'll just express my, my panic. Because I don't even know what the item is proposing. The fact that you're confused, Mr. Behar, I mean, it's like, we're both coming at this probably from opposite views. You're not sure what it is and I'm not sure what it is. But anyway, so here's my panic button. The reality is, if you think of your own shopping, that if you go to a place and you can't park or it's so hard to park that you're losing time on other things that you have to do, you're going to be less likely or even unlikely to return. Because people in their stressed days don't have extra time to remote park. If that adds 40 minutes while you're walking to and from your remote park, whatever, it's, at some point you say, OK, I'm going somewhere else. I don't have the extra time. So my panic button is, anything that approves remote parking is basically poison to the prosperity of Miracle Mile. And I really view this as a panic button because nobody, the developers now, forgive the expression here, we live, thanks to Citizens United, developers can contribute most to the political campaigns. And if we thought that Plato had philosopher kings, we live in an era and an epoch of developer kings. Because they control the contributions, unlimited donations to PACs. And so there's only so much I can say. And at the end of the day, if you're talking with our friend here, Vinnie Torre, who is partially a developer, you have to say, are you going to end up squeezing yourself out of parking? And I think that if you go very far with this remote parking, first of all, there is no remote parking. The only parking that can be done for remote is to raid the park. Wait a second, let me just finish, let me finish.
Let me just state, excuse me, let me just state, but the remote parking is G2.
It's coming up, this is not, this is something else.
These are two divorced items or separate, they're not connected?
But you, Mr. Chair, can I? When it comes to that other item, you could speak on that item. This is, we're dealing with something else right now. When G2 comes, you could speak on that. And that's what you're referring to, the remote parking.
Well, I hope, I hope that your optimism is correct. I'd like to believe that these two items are completely separate.
This is an item that is not, right now, we're not dealing with remote parking. So let's keep it...
You're welcome to speak. I'm not going to tell you you're not welcome to speak. We always encourage people to come and speak.
No, I hear you. And so I'll surrender to the fact that I am confused. And I'll sit down and I'll wait for the next item.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Holmes, you're always welcome to speak. Do we have a next person?
I can sign in if you'd like. Sure. I don't think attorneys have to be sworn in, but I'll...
Attorneys don't.
Oh, I know, those are the people that should be sworn in. Know where we went wrong on that one.
So Jill, just to be clear, in chambers, we don't have anybody else signed up? Sorry about that. Thank you, Mario.
Yeah, quite all right. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mario Garcia Serra, with offices at 600 Brickell Avenue. Here tonight because I do represent several entities that do own property along the mile. And I think we sort of have to put in context, it's good for the discussion, what the mile has experienced over the last year. Because you remember, this board was part of it back in last year. There were significant amendments done to this overlay district, which brought down height, took away the ability to utilize TDRs along Miracle Mile, which were approved last year. And so now, there are some projects that are coming along or perhaps considering moving forward with the overlay district regulations as they were adopted last year. And now this possibility of a site plan, of an additional site plan review process has come. Now, keep in mind, as Jennifer mentioned already, and I think Mr. Holmes was alluding to, the, one of the changes that happened last year for Miracle Mile was the requirement that all properties fronting Miracle Mile have to remote park. So because of that remote parking requirement for all properties along Miracle Mile, they already are going to go through a conditional use approval process for the purpose of getting the remote parking approved. So it will ultimately come to this board and then ultimately the city commission. Now, what's proposed is, aside from the conditional use review of the remote parking, a conditional use review of the site plan, right? So when I first hear that, of course, I get some concerns as to, will this lead to ultimately maybe opening up the door to further reductions in the maximum permitted floor area or height or whatever it might be? And so, you know, I'll throw out there that those revisions that are on the revised version presented to you, some of them, I think, come from some suggestions that I have made to try to protect those properties and the development rights of those properties from being deprived of any further floor area or height as part of this new conditional use site plan review process. That's one thing I think you could potentially do to grant some assurance to property owners along the mile. You could also maybe try to exempt projects that are already going through the process right now. You know, there's, there's a host of things. But certainly where I'm coming from, where I think most property owners on the mile are coming from is, we already went through a pretty grueling process last year with regards to amendments to the overlay district. Let's not make this an additional grueling process of site plan review for properties along the mile.
Thank you. Jill, we have nobody else in chambers?
No, no one else.
Do we have anybody on Zoom?
No.
Anybody on phone platform? Now, at this time, I'll go ahead and close it for public comment, open it up for discussion. Louis?
I think if the commission wants to review smaller sites because they have their concerns that they want to see it and they want a site plan review, I have a difficult time voting against the will of the commission on this. Right now, it's 20,000 square feet. So if you have a smaller property, you have to go through that grueling process like Mario was pointing out. But the commission probably has got his, has their reasons for wanting to review and have their say in the, in smaller sites.
Claudia?
I would listen to more comments.
Vinnie?
Do you like those more comments?
Sure, why not? You know, I go to some of the things that I bring up once in a while, which I think go back to something Chip has said in the past. And it's about what's by rights and what's not by rights in the city. And that's a discussion that comes up quite a bit. Build by what's right, build by what's rights. At the end of the day, we keep removing the by rights away and we keep giving more and more of the final say to the commission. Which is, I'm not saying good or bad. I'm just saying, the trend has been that the projects that are approved, good, bad, or indifferent, some of them have been very controversial, have been reviewed by conditional use by the commission. I'm not sure that the final word by the commission is the ultimate best solution for the city. Maybe it is, maybe it's not. But what we keep doing is taking away the by rights to the point where it's almost designed by commission here. So this debate, it opens the floor for the whole citizenship to come up. Some people may say that's what we want. I'm not sure from the business side or from the people who develop, continuing to add layers and delays to have, ultimately, the commission decide what comes and goes is the best way forward.
Thank you. Chip?
Yeah, I kind of tend to agree with Vinnie on this one. But I don't, maybe staff, I don't need, maybe I need a little more explanation. I mean, what is, what is the concern? I mean, at the end of the day, like I got tied up on that tree issue. At the end of the day, what are we trying to accomplish five, 10 years from now? What's the long-term play on this?
The commission wants that, wants to be able to see more projects on Miracle Mile. I think that's...
More projects? And this is a way to stimulate projects, they think?
No, they want to be able to have input on more projects.
Oh, they want to see visually, they don't want to see more projects?
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes.
See more projects?
They want their fingerprints on more projects.
And why? Are they not happy with the projects now? I mean, I wasn't, I didn't read the...
I'm not sure if there are, if there are any that are really been done in the last few years, besides one that's, you know, by right on the corner of Lejeune and Miracle Mile.
So what was the impetus from Commissioner Anderson? Were you privy to those discussions at the commission meeting? Because I didn't, I didn't tune in on that.
I think the concern is that even though remote parking is required, that the commission can't really get involved with the site plan part of that aspect. So that's why she wants to...
So this is site plan review?
Yes.
Because conditional uses, to me, were always like schools, churches, bank, drive-throughs. It was more of a use than a, than a underlying zoning. I mean, so that's why I don't quite understand what the...
So the conditional use is an approval process?
Right, I understand. But, but it's more for the use of the property, right? Conditional use?
It's more about adding conditions to what you're requesting.
Thank you.
To go on, on to the next area.
I, I tend to agree with Mario's comment, Mario Garcia Serra's comment. You know, we already went through a process that we took away maximum on height, that at one point, it used to be, if I remember, like 70 feet, we lowered it down to 50 feet. We've done so much already that we're not making it easy to build, you know, as Vinnie said, as of right. We're complicating, you know, the ability to do something. A 10,000 square foot site that you already have to go through conditional use because of the remote parking. I think that's, that's more than enough. I don't, I'm not in favor of adding more layers to this process. I think that, you know, it's, we're going to discourage new developments to come on Miracle Mile that we need it, we really need it. You know, it's a beautiful street that. It's a beautiful street that today, we need to add more life to it. So I'm not in favor of this.
Claudia?
I agree with you, with Mr. Behar. I think, and also with what Vinnie said, you know, I think that there's already a process in place. And adding to that process, I mean, I think it's a good process. It's already a rigorous process, and I really do think that Miracle Mile, right now, needs to be revitalized, and we want to attract those businesses. We want that to come to Miracle Mile. And maybe adding another layer that might delay that process, or might discourage some from coming there.
One of the concerns that I would, that I would have is, if it would be so difficult for a person, for a 10,000 square foot lot to develop or put together and have to go through the same steps as a 20,000 square foot lot, would it not then induce people to mass or put together larger lots if they have to go through the process anyways? So for me, I'd rather have smaller projects coming through the city, which is tough enough as it is, and have diversity. That's just my view on it.
I have one question. The site plan review, what would that review add to a 10,000 square foot property that already doesn't, is not in the system? But other than spending time and money, what kind of?
What kind of things are the commission looking for? I can't answer that.
But is the site plan review basically having, the additional step is having to go to the city commission?
Right.
Which is a political.
Absolutely.
Arena.
But they may see it as far as notifying more extensively for the neighbors and the citizens in the area to be more aware of the project.
You know, Louis?
And it's about, the commission wants to have their, you know, their fingerprints on the projects.
No, I think after, after listening to you and Chip and Vinnie, I think probably have to reconsider my original thoughts.
Anybody would like to make a motion on this? Vinnie?
You started the whole thing, so you got.
I did start it.
Can I just, just a little housekeeping measure?
Yes.
The amendments that were put on here, I assume, regardless of what the vote is, which is a recommendation, is going to go to the commission, they use the old format. This is not the ordinance that's actually on the agenda. So you just need to make these changes to the draft ordinance that's on the agenda.
Yes, so when this moves forward to commission, with whatever recommendation comes from tonight, it will be the ones that are printed in front of you right now with those changes.
Okay, perfect.
So I will vote for denial, make a motion for the deny, I guess, huh?
So Chip is making a motion to deny as presented.
I'm a second.
We have a second by Vinnie. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, please.
Item G2, in ordinance of the City Commission of Coral Gables, Florida, providing for text amendments to the C of Coral Gables Official Zoning Code, Article 10, Parking, Section 10-109, Payment in lieu and Remote Off-Street Parking, to clarify, remote parking processes and fee structure, providing for servability repealer, clarification for an effective date. Item G2, public hearing.
Thank you. Jennifer Garcia, City Planner. I have a few slides that they should have. Perfect. And this is also, this is also in your staff report as well. So right now, there are three ways to park cars. Option one is the way they're most likely used to, that you park it on site, you meet your minimum parking requirements on site. The other option is the remote parking. So the remote parking is when you're parking all or an amount of parking, of spaces remotely, within 1,000 feet, okay? And the third option that you have is a payment in lieu. And payment in lieu is you're paying out of the requirement. So you can pay out of your requirement as much as, as much as you want. Those are your three, three options as far as providing parking, right? For meeting the parking requirements. So back when this was amended last, which was last year, as far as zoning code update, the intent was that there would be a fee associated with each remote parking space that you're remote parking. And then, in addition to that fee, if you decide to pay out of the, out of the requirement, then you pay again, and that's, you're out of the parking requirement for life. Now, when that was drafted in the zoning code update, for whatever reason, it wasn't as clear as what the intent was. So we're, now that we're starting to get more remote parking requests, we're looking at this, and we're making some changes and according to what the intent originally was. So I have Kevin Kenny here, our parking director, for the questions.
Mostly to answer questions, I would say, I think Jennifer.
Could you state your name and position?
Kevin Kenny, I'm the parking director for the City of Coral Gables. Just a couple of minor tweaks to what Jennifer said. Yes, there is a payment in lieu. Although, we do not give applicants carte blanche on deciding how many spaces they can buy out of. That is something in the city code. Once you go over 25 spaces, it does have to be reviewed. And if the system can't handle somebody buying out of 100 parking spaces, it won't be allowed. So it is an option, but it has to work in the system. And since we had some conversation about Miracle Mile, I will just mention, and Jennifer mentioned also, that we have prohibited development of parking on Miracle Mile. And one of the reasons we can do that comfortably is within 100 feet of Miracle Mile, I have 3,000 parking spaces available. And currently, even at peak, we are not hitting 50 or 60% occupancy. So there is capacity there. We still review any request for remote parking on the mile. And like I said, the amount you're allowed to buy has to be, if it's over 25 spaces, has to be reviewed. And we have to be able to justify that the system can manage whatever the request is.
I have a question for Jennifer, just a clarification. On, on the summary, on the application summary. The second, number two, the second bullet point says, payment in lieu of providing any parking is paid per space in addition to the payment of 100% into the parking trust. Does that mean that, explain that to me, I'm not sure.
So, so this is, the amendment is to clarify the remote parking, right? So remote parking now, as drafted, you'd be paying a fee to remote park. So not only are you buying the space and you're leasing it, or however, you're making an agreement to your neighbor to park the cars there, or at least say you're parking the cars there, you're going to be charged a fee for that per space. So if you want to pay out of it, as much as, you know, Kevin feels comfortable that the city can handle as far as the payment in lieu, you'd pay again to be paid out of that system. So you'd pay twice for the payment in lieu, as Kevin feels comfortable as far as the system can handle.
And that's a fair characterization. I would classify it this way. Typically, you're required to have remote parking. But the issue is, what happens if, at some point, you cannot obtain the remote parking? Then, how does the city handle that situation? Because we're in a tough spot. And essentially, the stick is that, well, you either go find alternative remote parking, or you're going to have to pay again. Now, remember, especially when we're talking about Miracle Mile, the amount being paid for remote parking is a significantly discounted number. It's $5,500. Anybody who is building anything right now knows that's a steep, steep discount.
It's a good deal.
Let me ask you something. For Miracle Mile, it's $5,500. Looking through here, in the Design and Innovative District, how much is it?
10,000. That's surrounding shops at Merrick Park. And the reason it works there is because the city has some control over 400 parking spaces in the development at Village of Merrick Park.
And what about citywide?
It's 12.5. And that is actually primarily where we're concerned about the larger requests. Anything over 25 spaces, we would want to review that to make sure we can make it work.
Now, the city's building a hub right now for parking, right, in the area? What would you say it's costing the city to build that per space?
That's probably not a good example, because the design.
Let's just answer the question.
The garage, the garage we're building at the Public Safety Building,
Right.
we're probably in the $35,000 to $40,000 a space range.
35 to 40,000. We've got some architects with us. How much does it cost to build, when you build, how much does a parking space cost you?
I think it's in that range, 35 to 40.
That range?
Absolutely.
Vinnie? That's correct.
And if you're going into a basement, it's even more.
Okay. So why are, why are, why are our fees so cheap? I understand.
No, no, there's, there's differences here. Now, if, if you're eliminating a space
Okay.
from the city, it costs you 42,000.
But that's on the, on the right of way.
That's in the right of way, right.
But that's not.
Well, but, but that's how we got to that number. The reason the numbers are different when we talk about, you know, parking requirements and the payment in lieu is, for example, at Village of Merrick Park, are you not only paying into the system $10,000, but you have to pay monthly for the parking space? So that is covering the development.
Let's look at citywide, 12,500 citywide.
Right.
If it costs a developer, right, let's just take a number at $35,000. Why are we only asking for 12,500? Why would, why would a developer even want to provide parking?
Most of the developments happening citywide, the developers are providing parking.
Or not?
So, no, they are. They're choosing to provide parking. Now, the, here's kind of the thought process. If they did buy into it, it would be 12.5 that supports the public parking system. They would then either find remote parking, or they would build their own parking, or they, some combination of both. If they had purchased remote parking, and then later got in a situation where they would not, could not provide the parking, they have to pay it a second time. So their total cost at that point is 25,000. But what we're going to be reviewing is whether it's feasible in a specific situation. Right now, we're building 450 spaces on Menorca. If there were a development close to there, there may be capacity in the system to support some remote parking. The idea behind remote parking is so that the developments can reach a higher quality. So you don't have to build a big box, and then your development on top of the box.
For me, I understand the theory behind it, and it makes sense. I just think it's quite a bit of a discount to a developer at the pricing structure. That's just, that's just me.
Well, I will tell you, we established the number for Miracle Mile based on calculations done by an appraiser so that we would not go crosswise with law.
What I'm hearing, and I think this goes to, is that second payment, which I had never heard of. And some of the things you're adding is that we must make it work, or we may. I had not understood, I guess, that the condition of remote parking had to be in a city situation could handle you, as opposed to, if I can find parking, that. Right, so you're saying is, if my lease expires, and I'm nowhere able to find more spots, and I can't ask you for those spots, I got to give you more money. That's new for me.
Well, no, the commission can approve remote parking in a city facility. It's not happened very many times, but it has happened. Typically, and we need to step back here. The reason the number is 20, anything over 25 spaces, is we recognize that we would like to help and encourage the smaller developments. Because even if they're not on the mile, you can't really develop a 2,500 square foot lot at any height without, your site doesn't allow for parking.
What you said confuses me. You said, unless we can make it work. I don't quite understand when you say, unless the city can make it work, what does that ultimately mean?
Well, okay, we have to look at the parking, the system as a whole. Now, make it work, maybe there's a private garage next door that has capacity where you can get a long-term agreement.
So does that mean proof to you that we're able to find parking, that's making it work?
Yes.
Okay. So if we can find parking, five years later, I give you another lease, as long as that keeps going.
Well, I believe the zoning code currently requires annual certification, or.
At least, yeah.
It could be, as long as the concurrent lease is in place.
Yes.
And, and that could go indefinitely.
And the only reason to even talk about the second payment is if a developer gets in a situation where there's no alternative, or they can't find an alternative.
So at that point, they would pay the city 25,000 per space?
They would pay whatever the original number is again. So if they paid 10,000, let's say they were at Village of Merrick Park, they paid 10,000. Later, they find out that they can no longer get the spaces that they entered into the agreement with, and there's no alternative. They would pay a second 10,000. And then, at that point, essentially, the city would probably have to tap into the 400 spaces we have some control over.
Isn't the idea of this to also fund parking that this, for the city to build?
Yes. I mean, we believe in a robust public parking system being the most efficient way to manage parking.
Which I agree, but then, how does the city charge less than what it will cost them to build even in the future?
Well, but, but the initial payment, the payment in lieu is, has never been intended to cover the cost. If you come to us and you're renting space, we're obtaining revenue through that, through that stream also. And I, I mean, if you looked at our system, essentially, we hope to pay off or raise revenue to the point where every facility is in the black within 10 years, which is a fairly high bar for most. within 10 years, which is a fairly high bar for most public parking systems. So, yes, the initial payment helps us, but it is the reoccurring permit payment that is going to make the system work.
Maybe you have this fact, maybe you don't. Annually, a space in a garage, what is the revenue that you get from-
One space?
That space? After your expenses, okay? Because in order for me to calculate that, you know, you're gonna pay in 10 years.
I use a word that, outside of this room, I never said it. Our profit, our profit on a space is probably about $1,500 a year.
So, your profit, so it would take us today 20 years, 25 years to pay for that space?
Not if half of it was paid off with the payment in lieu.
But I'm looking, you know, no, listen, I-
I just don't see it that way. It's just, on a financial end, I just don't see it that way.
I'm trying to look at it to encourage more development, especially in the mile, that remote parking is the right way to go. Because there's no other option.
Which we want to encourage. I want to encourage that. But I just think the city, the fee is very low.
And actually, in the miles, you really should not even maybe require parking if you're at Miracle Mile.
You know, you have to park, remote parking.
You have to get a finance guy to tell you whether they've amortized $35,000 with a bond over 20, 30 years, does $1,500 cover the debt? And I'm not sure, I know the answer. Here's the question. So, and maybe I'm still confused. Let's pretend it's 100 parking spaces you're required to have. My understanding is 25 of those have to be purchased. You have to pay down, no matter what, 25 at $10,000 a pop. The other 75, I can go remote parking, and lease my spaces and give you the lease. And I'm good to go. Is that an option? Pay down my 25 required, give you $10,000 times 25, give you $250,000. The rest of my spaces are fulfilled by lease option, which I can prove to you I have a lease, and that I'm good to go. Then I have fulfilled the conditional use. Is that an option? That's correct. I can also pay down $12,500, or, I'm sorry, $10,000 for the 75, or the entire 100. I still have to go out and lease my spaces. I'm paying you down, but I'm still going to go lease my spaces.
Yes, you have-
So I have option A, option B, those are two. Now, what I'm lost is on that third payment, that I still don't know what the hell we're talking about. That second payment, so, right, so, under plan B, I already paid all my spaces. And I'm still leasing spaces. And you're saying is if I have done that, and I can't find the spaces, then I gotta give you another 12.5?
If you cannot renew those leases, then you have to come back for the payment.
So, I was talking to somebody the other day, and obviously, everybody wants to go to plan A. Why am I going to pay you down? If I can just give you the lease, I'm good to go. Why do you double, double pay it? Am I saying something that's not true here?
Well, I think you're good to go for that year. And then, if it's not renewed on the second year, then you gotta double.
If you're unable to come back to Development Services on your anniversary date and show that you're continuing, then you have a problem, because you no longer are parking your demand. And then, if you cannot correct that situation, you would have to pay the city again. Now, in certain situations, what would happen? If you were in the central, if you were near Miracle Mile, we probably could easily handle that. If you're in the Innovation, Design and Innovation District, we have access to 400 spaces that we, not that we would want to, but we could possibly make those available.
If I go to choice A, which means I pay down only my 25% and lease from the beginning, and then I cannot find the lease, am I paying you $25,000 or $12,500?
I don't think you can get a building permit until you can show where you're going to park.
Correct, so let's say that's been fulfilled. Year one, year two, year three, I can't find parking anymore. But I have not given you more than 25% of the spaces paid.
No, but then you would have to pay for everything.
The 25, the double, the double payment?
The 75.
The double payment? For the 75, I had never paid, is my point. I always leased. I don't have to buy down the spaces, less than 25% of the spaces.
Your question is where does this double payment come in? There's no double payment.
There is a double payment.
That's what they're referring to, and I completely-
Yes, I think our opinion right now is you would have to pay the double.
And how much would that be?
Well, in the Design Innovation District, that would be $20,000. And on Miracle Mile, that would be $11,000.
That's a great deal still.
Okay, but this is what was throwing me off. The clarification to this was clarifying wide. Okay, so you're saying there's a second payment if you guys, if somebody cannot find parking at some point that time.
If they can't fulfill their obligation.
You gotta come back and pay us the double.
The double.
Is that correct?
Is that correct?
Because I never had heard the word double before.
You're forced through the payment in lieu option.
But for the double amount?
That's the right term, to force payment in lieu. But I always thought it was 10, 12.5, never a double.
Well, because now, because now we're clarifying that there is a fee that's shared with the remote parking. And the payment in lieu is to pay again, to be out of the requirement altogether.
But in his example, which is a great example, if you're able to satisfy 75%, at the beginning, you're not paying anything.
Right.
And then, when he goes ahead-
You're paying per remote parking space, though.
Only on the 25%.
So somebody, it could be anybody, you know?
It could be anybody, he could be paying-
No, for anything that you're remote parking, you're paying for that each space.
Yeah, but that could be Ocean Bank, or the Hyatt, or anybody.
You're paying the city the ability to remote park.
So you're paying in the Innovative Design District? For remote parking, you're saying I'm paying from the get-go $10,000 per space to be able to go lease it somewhere else? At the time that I have to renew that lease, if I don't, I cannot renew the lease, I will have to pay the additional $10,000.
Okay, we're actually going through one of these in the Design District right now, so let me kind of walk you through it. They're constructing 80 spaces, they're remote parking 130. They are, they would, in that situation, pay us for the 130?
130.
Just for the right to remote park. And they would contract with the provider for the remote parking. And if they ever lost those spaces, they would have to come back and pay us a second time for the 130.
So right now, they're paying you $10,000 for those 130, $1.3 million?
Under this code, that's what it would be.
And then, if in the future, you know, in two years, three years, they cannot renew those leases where they're providing, they have to come and pay you another $10,000 per space?
Because they can't meet their obligation. And at that point, the city would have to decide whether we would dip into our 400 spaces.
So, just to be clear-
That's a great deal.
Everybody in Miracle Mile gotta do remote parking. Everybody's gonna pay you $5,000 times whatever parking they're required. That's just a must. There's no way around it. Everybody will have to pay a remote parking fee.
We have an interesting situation when you're talking about Miracle Mile, because they get the ground floor without parking.
For the required parking.
Yeah, the requirement is going to be smaller.
But there's no way around having to pay into the remote parking fee? You must put that into your proposed formula?
For 100% of the parking that you need.
That's what you need.
I still don't understand where the 25 come in, because it seems to me that in any district, in any which way, you gotta pay the city the going amount.
Was it 25 that you're referring to?
I'm sorry?
Was it 25 that you're referring to?
The 25 spaces that he was mentioning, it was 25 spaces.
That's what triggers the review. Anything over 25 spaces triggers a review, so the city has an opportunity to say, you know, in this case, it will not work.
But in the example that you just gave, the person's going to pay the city $1,300,000 on the 130 spaces.
Yes.
If the person had to build those 130 spaces, they'd be paying $4,550,000. I still go back to it's a great deal for the developer. Why is the city not charging more money on that? Sorry.
No.
I'm sure that you only had to buy down 25% of your needs. That's how I remember it.
Currently, yes.
You're saying that's being wiped away. So it's no longer 25% is the minimum. You must pay the entire required.
Yes, correct.
Is this the change?
Because before the 25% was tied to the required parking, it wasn't tied to the remote parking. So it's kind of confusing as far as why is it required? Why is it tied to the required parking? So depending on how much you're going to remote park, and how much you were actually going to pay for the fee to remote park. Does that make sense? Like, if you had 100 spaces that you're required to have, and you're remote parking 25% of that, you're already required to have 25% of your required parking with today's zoning code. So you already are paying 100% of those remote spaces. So what this is doing is it's tying each space fee to the remote parking that you're actually requesting.
So what percentage of your parking can you do in lieu of? If you needed 100 spots, can you do all 100?
It actually depends on, on the mile, you're required to remote park everything.
Understood. Let's go away from the mile.
Let's go away from the mile. The miles, outside Miracle Mile.
Let's do citywide.
In the Design and Innovation District, there may be somebody who comes in and asks to remote park 100% of their parking. It hasn't happened yet, but it may happen.
But it's a great deal for it to happen.
Yeah, it's a great deal for it to happen. So what does it cost to rent a spot in Coral Gables if you have to go out and lease one for remote parking?
130, 140?
A month?
Yeah.
How much?
130, 120, 130, 140.
1500?
Vinnie, could you speak into the mic?
Between $100 and $150 a month, per space.
So what's that, 1,500 bucks a year or so?
Per space, so if you did-
100 spaces?
100 spaces, you know, you would be $10,000 or $11,000 a month.
Why are you going to build a parking?
Well, no, I'm just trying to figure out how long we, by the time you pay your lease fees, is it more advantageous for you just to pay the entire amount upfront, which it probably is? If you don't ever have to pay for parking again, I mean?
Well, that second payment in lieu fee has to be reviewed by Kevin and his team.
I understand, but still, I mean, $1.3 million to totally eliminate 100-spot parking requirement is a pretty tall, long, good deal.
Right, but then the 100 spots are going to cost you $130,000 a year.
One time?
No, no, no.
No, you have to still rent it.
Annually.
Oh, okay.
Wait, run that by me again, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought if you bought the spot-
But it was a one-time.
You still have to pay somebody for your use of the spot.
But you're in the remote park.
You bought yourself the remote parking option. Now, you still have to go and rent the spaces for you to park, right?
But if you wanted to buy a spot in lieu of remote parking, you can't do that.
Yes, if Kevin can, you pay again, right? The same fee, $1,000 for-
So you're paying $20,000. So you're paying 2.5 million.
But that's not your choice.
Oh, okay.
I mean, if you get to the point where you cannot meet your obligation, your obligation is to have remote parking, which is the 130.
I'm sorry, I can't meet my obligation.
Then you have to pay the double.
Okay, so I come to you one day and want to say I can't meet my obligation. I want to pay for all 100 spots, here's 2.5 million bucks.
But I don't think he's saying that you're going to get a spot after that.
Yeah, then you may have a luck. You may have a building you can't lease.
So what do you do? You're going to demolish the building?
I'm not the developer, the developer.
No, no, but what alternative, in other words?
You still have to park your office workers and your folks living in the building. You have to park them, unless nobody's coming in a car.
That's why we're saying you have to come in with proof that you have the remote parking. And the penalty is if you fail to do what your obligation is.
But that doesn't relieve you of the responsibility of parking?
Forget about what the market may require or not, it's what the code is enforcing.
I get it now.
I don't see in the Gables, any development, any project, whether it's residential or office, to be viable without, you know, providing any parking. This is not what you see in the City of Miami downtown. But, you know, I, and I want to be very careful, because I think it's a good thing for the development. Yes, it's a great option to have.
What I'd like to do is just see if we have any speakers before we continue. If you're done with the presentation. Thank you. Jill, do we have any speakers for this item?
Mr. Holmes?
Welcome back, Mr. Holmes.
Thanks, you're very nice, I appreciate that. And I gotta tell you something. I think I'm going to have sweet dreams tonight, maybe, because I was afraid that-
Can you state your name for the record, please, and your address?
Thank you. So my name is Jackson Ripp Holmes. I live at 35 Sedonia Avenue, Coral Gables. I'm a property owner on Miracle Mile. So again, you already have the feeling, I'm defensive for parking on Miracle Mile, because if there's no parking, there's no money. And even the city has an interest in people spending money on Miracle Mile. Think of South Beach. If you're going to go shopping, it may not be on South Beach, because the parking is a hassle. You get a $350 towing fee just if you park in the wrong place. No parking, no money. I was very, forgive me for saying happy, that you shot down the previous amendment. I still don't understand it. Maybe none of us really did, and that's why I got shot down. But as we head now to this item, which you were kind enough to reorient me to speak on, I hope that you shoot this down too. It is confusing. You know, it's so interesting, really, all of us are kind of students of government. This whole thing, if you recall, forgive me now, I'm going to make a criticism, was done outside of the public purview. I think this zoning rewrite, whatever we want to call it, was done over a period of three years, two and a half of which the public was not even informed. And I think that was actually detrimental, because it gets down at the end of the day to a developer. Mr. Behar, I think you're sympathetic to their point of view, Mr. Torrey. At the end of the day, if we think into 15 years into the future, what I see is, I'm going to pick on Terranova for a second. They cannibalize their own parking to the point where Miracle Mile becomes Terranova Street. Nobody else has parking. Even if you look at what they're going to, they want to do at the corner of Galeano and Miracle Mile right now. I'm going to reach out to those nearby properties, because they're going to starve those property owners nearby of parking. They're going to die, or they're going to lose the value of their property. They're not going to have parking, because the remote parking will be the public parking in that parking garage at Fritz and Franz, right? That, all the businesses in that area depend on that public parking. But guess what? That's going to evaporate. This idea that there's plenty of remote parking, yeah, let's talk about that. Fortunately, we have a good parking director who's willing to talk. He said he can find you $3,000. I'll bet you I can prove him wrong. I'll bet you. I'll bet you any amount of money, I can prove him wrong. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other speakers?
So Sarah?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My deal with CSAT with offices at 600 Brickell Avenue. Here, I have clients that are property owners, both along the mile, in the Central Business District, and as well as the Design District. I walked in here, I think, just as confused as you guys with regards to what's proposed. I think I'm a little less confused, but you guys tell me. I'm going to try to summarize, I think, what the situation is. I believe the existing code allows you to remote park. If you're remote park, you have to buy down 25% of it. Existing code, I think, also allows you to pay in lieu 100% of all the parking requirement. I believe the proposed ordinance, and Kevin, Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong, is proposing that if you're parking remotely, you have to pay, you find the spaces, and you're going to pay whoever's giving you those spaces, their lease amount. You're also going to pay 100% of that remote parking to the city. With the potential backup being if at some point in time you can no longer have access to those remote parking spaces, you then pay another in lieu payment to the city. Does that sound right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. At least I know. I just need to get clarification on what exactly is proposed. You know, the one, the one thing I might say is, under, with this ordinance adopted, would, could you still pay at, at initiation, at the very beginning, could you still pay off your parking requirement 100% by an in lieu payment?
Well, there is in the city code, the requirement that anything above 25 spaces.
If you could direct your comments to the board.
There is in the city code, the current requirement, that anything over 25 spaces does have to be reviewed. So the city could deny a payment in lieu of something over 25 spaces if, if it essentially did not make sense.
Just a clarification. When you say that the city could deny, you mean the city commission?
Yes.
In other words, if it's 25 or less, then it can be approved administratively. If it's more than 25 spaces, then it's got to go to public hearing. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification. Do we have, do, do we have any other speakers?
No.
Any on Zoom?
No.
Any on phone platform?
No.
At this time, I'll go ahead and close it for a public comment.
I just have one question, two questions. How, how did you come up with the numbers? 10,000, 12,000? How was that?
At the time of the zoning code, Development Services or the City Manager's Office, I'm not sure which, hired an appraiser to, to come up with the numbers.
Okay, and so do I lock that number in? If five years from now I lose my remote parking, do I pay the current cost? I'm assuming it's going to, going to rise. Or do I pay the number that I originally locked in at five years earlier?
As opposed to if five years from now the rate is.
I'm sure that $10,000 figure might be $15,000 five years from now. I'm assuming it's going to be looked at and adjusted. So do I lock myself in at the current rate? Or am I paying a future rate when it comes time to pay up?
You're buying futures.
I'm just, because I mean, I think.
You're buying futures in the stock market.
I am only a recovering attorney. I am no longer practicing. But that is something that, I think it would be the rate existing at the time.
But is there a question, is there escalation rate?
Yeah, I, I just, if I, five years from now, lose my ability and I have to pay the.
So is there an escalation rate? This fixed number.
So I think I understand this part. The actual fee is not part of the zoning code. The fee is part of the city code. Is that correct?
Yes.
So the, and the fee pursuant to the code is set by a resolution. Is that right? So if the resolution over time gets changed and it would be up to the, the city commission to change that amount, then if at the time you find yourself without spaces, then whatever the resolution then provides, that's what the cost would be.
Okay, that, that makes sense.
Yeah. Does that mean that there's an automatic escalation rate?
No, but it is reviewed and changed by the commission.
Should there be an escalation rate?
I think our experience with kind of automatic escalations is not real good, but we do annually at the budget review all fees. And if it's appropriate to change the fee at budget time, that happens on a regular basis.
It would happen on a yearly basis?
Yes. There is at least a review every year.
Is there a limit right now in the city of how many, what's the minimum amount of spaces if I'm a developer that I need to provide of my required parking? Or, or there is not?
No, the code allows discussion of up to 100%, but anything over 25 spaces will be reviewed and is a conditional use.
And there's no condition in terms of distance? For example, other cities.
Yes, there is. It's a thousand feet.
Okay, because some cities say you have to provide a minimum of X amount of spaces of the required parking, and then you can buy the rest, figure it out.
So there is a, a minimum of 10 remote parking spaces. So if you have less than 10, then you can talk to Kevin about possibly paying out of the system.
But if I'm doing a project, let's say for 200 spaces, and I say, what a deal. I can, I can just park remotely, pay the city, and not spend 35, $40,000 on my parking garage because I'm dealing with height and this and that and the other. And I want to do a basement. Or, or the city doesn't take the position, okay, you're required 200 spaces. You have to provide a minimum because we know that you're going to be able to fit X within your property. And then after that, we can talk about what you can buy. But if the city doesn't have a minimum requirement for the spaces that you have to provide on a development, it opens up the door for the discussion that, and the questions that have been on. Then the, the developer begins to question, what's my best deal?
Well, remember, the remote parking in general is a conditional use request. So if the commission or staff, as it's going through the review process, doesn't feel like you're providing enough onsite parking, that you're in areas that have a lot of, you know, on-street parking or, or, you know, garages or such, I think the recommendation would probably not be favorable.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking of other areas, obviously, than the mile, right? But so I, I think it's healthy to have a minimum amount of parking spaces. Healthy for the city to say, developer, you need to provide a minimum amount of parking spaces within your development. And the rest, then you can.
Well, I think that conversation is going to be had. You, you mentioned a development that requires 200 spaces. Let's say near Village Merritt Park, somebody needs 200 spaces. They may come to the city, but because it's more than 25, it's going to be reviewed. And the city may say, you know, you've got room on your site. We know there's a garage across the street, but we don't think you should park 200 spaces there. Maybe 100. And you need to provide. That conversation will be had. I mean, just because you can, doesn't mean the city's going to allow it.
Automatic, but the fact that as an architect, we have to read codes all the time and then report back to the developer or client. If the code doesn't say anything, I don't, I have to tell you that the conversation goes on and on and on. So I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I think that a certain distance and a certain, which you told me there is, you telling me there is, and a minimum amount required per, per project could be healthy. And then you have the conversation whether the amounts are too low or not.
So, so that goes to two points. One is the development of small sites is, you cannot really have a minimum because at that point, you're lifting up the building and it doesn't work. And the whole, I think the whole point is to try to get some things on ponds, some things in the mile, some things other places. It just lands worth more than the building. You're going to knock something down and without parking waivers, you can't do it. So that's really part of the, the reason for all this. Second thing is, you made a point of, okay, if, if I can get this great deal, I'll take it. I think this is all market-driven too. You know, I'm not going to go ahead and just do it because I can. If my folks are not going to stay in my building or not going to rent from me because I have no parking, it doesn't work. So there's going to have to be a back and forth of what works. It, it's not just, it's cheaper for me not to do it, so I'm not going to do it. And then what? And you don't have any tenants? So, so there's a whole series of, of backstories to this.
Well, let's, let's go back to the design and innovation district. The one project we know that has moved quite a ways down the path is they are providing 80 spaces onsite and the conversation is remote parking 130 spaces. I think that's a typical situation. They could have come in and said, you know, we need 210 spaces. Let me buy 210 spaces in the garage across the street.
But your executives aren't going to stay there and you're not going to get a doctor to say, I'm going to put my practice there because they're going to park there.
So I think developers are going to be sensitive to those types of issues. And let's say they did come in and say, we want to buy 210 spaces across the street. If the city knows that that garage is 75% full and there's only 120 spaces available, the city's not going to allow them to then go park 210 spaces. I mean, there is a requirement on the city to get traffic counts, to get studies. And we've done that in the Village Merritt Park area. So we know what's available. And we, we hopefully are not going to allow a developer to come in and ask for more than will work in the district.
All right.
So I've been told that the city manager is watching. And since this is more like his item, this is requested by him, he'd like to defer the item until following meeting when he can be able to be present.
So the city would like to go ahead and.
The city manager wishes to defer the item, request a text minute.
If you all feel that there's still confusion about the numbers and all this, because it seems like it's.
It's clarified.
Some of that, then we could defer it. And he would be present if you have questions.
The city would like to defer it at this time, this item.
If you feel that, you know, you need some additional clarification before you vote on the item.
I was actually going to ask if anybody would like to make a motion.
And, and I would do that. So if, if the city wants the motion to move forward, we're, we're ready to go.
Okay.
It's up to you.
Look, I, I, I think, I think there's a lot of confusion, everybody. And I think that if, if we're being asked to, to, to defer the item, I.
That's what I want to make sure if.
If you feel that you would benefit from having the city manager here to perhaps explain portions of the item because I'm not, it seems to me, watching over there, that there's a lot of questions about the item that I'm not sure that you feel comfortable in that you understand it completely. But that, that's just my perception.
From, from my personal, I, I understand what's being proposed. I'm clear about it.
But is there a and or a but or however? No, I'm, I'm sensing that the city would like to defer the item to the next meeting.
But if we're going to the third, should, should we make some comments or recommendations? What we're expecting for them to come back with?
Well, my, my understanding is that for a clearer explanation, now we can always state some of our concerns so that the city can come back and maybe answer those concerns or look at those concerns. I think that would be appropriate.
That's what I was thinking. When I, when we go to the Board of Architects or any kind of Board of Architects and the architects say, come back, I, I beg for, please give me some guidance.
Well, and this.
Give me some thoughts. That's what I, I'm relating to, right? Something that, that happens to us at, at other boards, so.
Can I make a motion to defer this to Mr. Chairman?
You'd like to make a motion to defer?
Yeah, and I, I'd like to second that motion because I, I think that it reads here, this whole process is to clarify the remote parking process, and I'm still very confused.
We have a motion and we have a second to defer. Any discussion? We need, go ahead, please.
Are we, I think if we, we need to defer to a date certain.
To the next meeting.
Next meeting. So the next meeting.
I think it's deferred to when the city manager's available, I think, is.
Okay, so they don't have to be re-advertised.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, so it'll be deferred to when the city manager can come and make a presentation.
Is that okay that way?
Yes, which means that it'll have to be re-noticed and re-advertized because we don't have a date certain at this point.
Is that okay with the city?
Is that okay with the city? So, so you're okay with the city will have to re-advertise and wait? Or would the manager like to come in at the next meeting?
I think he would make himself available for the next meeting.
Okay, that was my understanding.
I understand it with a phone call with him now.
So we'd like, so you'd like to do a time certain to the next meeting?
Yes.
That's the city's position. Okay. We have a motion to defer to the next meeting.
What, what's the date of that meeting?
Jill?
December 14th.
So we have a motion.
So it's December 14th. So there'd be no further notice because we're giving the notice now.
Correct.
Unless the.
So there's no advertisement that would be necessary. So Chip?
Yes.
That's your motion to defer it to the next meeting, December 14th?
Your birthday, isn't it?
No.
14 days after mine, though.
I knew it was someone's birthday. Yes, that is my motion.
Mine's close. We have a second. Any discussion? No? Call the roll, please.
Chip Withers?
Yep.
Benny Torrey?
Yes.
Luis Revolta?
Yes.
Claudia Miro?
Yes.
Robert Behar?
Yes.
AB Eisenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, should we take a five-minute break for the?
Can we do a six? Pardon? Six minutes?
Six minutes would be fine.
Should we, what is the next item?
Item G2 and G3 are related.
The next two are related.
I'm going to have to, as I mentioned to you, I have to go.
Okay, if you have to go, I think Cloudy has to go. Do we have quorum? One, two, three. We only have four left.
Four. We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. Okay.
Okay.
For the record, let's note that Claudia Miro is leaving the meeting and so is Luis Revolta. Let's take a five-minute break, please. Thank you.
As soon as I can say that. Okay, okay. The elephant in the room wasn't. Yeah, yeah, yeah. She wasn't really telling you anything. She was purposely. I know. That's what I'm saying. What is all this? This came out of nowhere. I knew it. Came out of nowhere. No, absolutely. Without a doubt.
Without a doubt.
... by appeal process that they can, they can go through. So, oh, I'm back on, that's nice, good. So they could have to appeal within 10 days, which is pretty standard as far as appeal processes go, but they would be required to submit within 20, 21 days, an actual completed designation report with that, with that appeal, that they feel that this property is historic and that they know the history behind it, and they're going to submit something within 21 days with that appeal.
Are we looking, am I looking at the same, because is this the notices, right?
It's one of the notices. It's item G3, which has a staff report of two items.
Okay.
G3 and G4 are the same staff reports?
Yes, correct. Yeah, they're both historic-related. So I have, yes.
I'm Warren Adams, preservation officer. Anytime someone requests demolition of a property, they are required to come through my office for me to determine whether the property is eligible to be historically designated or not. If we determine it is eligible for designation, we must take a designation report to the preservation board. If I determine it is not eligible, then the code at the moment does not prevent someone from submitting a designation application, even after I've made the determination. This issue come up because recently I received a designation application for a property I determined had no significance over a year ago. So a year later, after I've made the determination, someone submitted a designation report for a property. What this process aims to do is the commission felt that there should be more transparency when I issue these letters. So the letters will be published online for the public to see. Within 10 days, a member of the public, a resident, has the right to submit a notice of intent to appeal, and if they do that, they have 21 days to submit a completed historic designation report.
And then what's the process after that?
If I still determine the property is not eligible, I deny it, but they do have the right to take it forward to the preservation board. If the preservation board recommend denial, they would have a right of appeal to city commission. So that is generally what this, this is intended to do. Transparency and allow members of the public the right to appeal my determination if I determine it is not historically significant.
But the process is the same?
The process is the same. The only difference is at the moment, they can submit a designation application a year after I've submitted my initial determination, saying it's not significant.
Yes, Vinnie?
No, I understood the point. How long are the letters that you are providing now good for? This one was a year later. How long do they stay?
They're valid for 18 months, and then the property owner must resubmit. If the letter expires and the property owner has not resubmitted, a member of the public can submit a designation application then. But there's nothing in the code at the moment that prevents someone submitting a designation application anytime after I've made my determination.
And the timing, so there's 21 days for them to give you the designation report, which could be good, bad, or indifferent. They're just going to provide you with something they feel is adequate?
This is one of the, one of the issues. It's going to be up to me to determine if the designation report is sufficient. It's almost certain in most cases that they will not be as thorough as the designation reports that our department provides. So that is a potential issue. If I determine something isn't sufficient to go forward, would they still have the right to take it to the, to the board?
If that happens, so they give you a semi-produced report, you deny it. Does the historic board review that same package that you just sort of denied? There's no additional?
There's no additional, unless I say to them, you know, you're going to have to, you know, add more information to this report.
So who can, who can file the appeal? Anybody citywide?
Any resident, yes.
Any resident, citywide can file it.
Yes.
And they can file an appeal whether you give the letter of determination in a positive or give a determination letter in the negative?
Normally, the negative comes from the property owner, so if I say it's eligible, it's not.
That was my point.
It's normally the property owner that would, that would actually appeal the designation when it goes. They would go to the preservation board, they would argue their case.
I got, I got, I got.
So how can I say this?
Just say.
If there's a continual coming to you over and over, oh, this one shouldn't have done this way, no, this one shouldn't have gone this way, and now all of a sudden, you're feeling the same pressure from the same person, group, four or five times, what happens?
Yeah, my issue is I've already made a determination, unless they come up with something which I've overlooked or missed, or, you know, I'm not sure why my determination would be different, because we do, we do thorough research on these. And, you know, unless a property was built in the 1980s or something, and it's a clear, no, this isn't, this isn't eligible. The sort of tricky ones come, those properties built in the 40s and 50s. But if I make a determination that it's not eligible, then a designation report can still be submitted. But unless there's, there's some information in there that I'd missed, we haven't found, my determination would possibly be the same.
It just seems to me that there's, could be some anti-development reasons for these to be filed. Whatever, I mean, just what happens. And then this becomes a big deal, and you're facing something that is not even worth, and again, when you guys do it, your staff reports have very much, you know, there's a big vetting there. I'm just concerned that then you're still relying on having this process take 21 days, and it's still with the same piece of paper that didn't mean anything.
I think the other thing to consider is you submit the letter of determination to me. I have 45 days to meet the determination. So the determination is then published. If someone wishes to appeal, they have 10 days to submit their intent to appeal. They then have 21 days to submit the designation application. I then maybe take a week or two to review it, and if I say no, it's probably going to take five or six weeks to get it to the preservation board. If the preservation board deny it, it's then potentially going to be another four weeks before it goes, goes to commission. But I must stress at the moment that the code allows people to do that. The only difference is there isn't this time constraint. They can submit it a year after the determination's been issued.
And that's the same if the city is the appellant as well?
It would be, although I don't believe I've ever seen the city appeal.
I mean, if the city itself wanted to appeal a decision from a board or an action.
Yes, I believe it's 10 days to submit the notice of intent, and then however long, I'm not sure that it's 21 days to submit for every appeal. I believe it might be.
Interesting. Thank you. Is that the city's presentation?
Yep.
Jill, do we have anybody in chambers for this item?
No.
Anybody on Zoom?
No.
Anybody on phone platform?
No.
At this point, I'd like to go ahead and close it for public comment. Any further discussion from anybody? Questions? Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll move it.
Chip? Make some motion to move as presented?
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Vinnie seconds. Any discussion?
This is just on what's being presented, this, this item, G3, is not in companion with the.
G4?
G4.
We're just voting on G3 right now.
So just to clarify before I leave this, you're going to post any letter that you give out on some platform online?
Yeah.
And that'll happen so that anybody that keeps up with it is going to see all the stuff that you're, you're saying is not historically worthy.
Yes.
And they could appeal that, because you're going to post it up, and they could appeal it.
I mean, I get it, and I, you know, obviously openness and transparency is a good thing. I see some faults in, in people just maybe using this as a.
The people that have been in the process are probably going to be the ones that are going to be appealing it anyway. I don't think, you think you're going to draw?
No, that's correct.
It's the people that have already been involved.
That care and will watch this and stay in tune with what's going on.
And groups?
Yep.
Any further discussion? No? Call the roll, please.
Chip Withers?
Yes.
Vinnie Torrey?
Yes.
Robert Behar?
No.
AB Eisenstadt?
No.
So we have a
mixed bag.
Well, we have a tie vote. You can try to break the tie, or it just goes as no recommendation. So do we have two yeses, two nos?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Right. So it goes as, it goes as not, no recommendation, or you could have another motion if you think you can reach consensus.
Is there anything that particularly bothers both of you?
For me, it's, my concern is people that, for no reason or rhyme, are just going to go ahead and appeal it.
I agree.
That's, that's my concern.
I agree.
I have no objections with posting. I think it should be posted. It should have been posted all along, but I think.
Then I'm putting more burden on that property owner that.
Because we have an expert that makes that determination, and there are boards, and there are people that review and so forth. And they, and you do a very thorough job.
A fantastic job.
Thank you.
So to me, it's just that's why.
And for me, simply that, that opens it up for anybody else that, you know, for the hell of it.
Bear in mind, they can do that at the moment. There's nothing in the code that prevents them from doing it.
They still have the appeal process.
But, but, but this just makes it easier for them to.
Because of the transparency of the postings?
No, because now you're posting online.
That's what I'm saying to you. It's the posting part.
Now, the posting, I don't mind the posting, but it's, now you're changing it that for 10 days, they can make that appeal. Am I incorrect in the way I understood it?
10 days to submit the intent, and then 21 days after that to submit a complete.
If it wasn't posted at all, they could still do that?
We do receive regular public, not public inquiries, but, yeah, public records requests from people in the community asking which ones have been issued that month, so we.
But they still have the same process?
Yes, they can still submit a designation application. The only difference is this is at least limiting the amount of time they have to do so, because we recently received one for a determination that was made a year ago.
So what? And then I'm confused, and I apologize.
So can I just, maybe I can clarify it. Previously, there wasn't a time deadline for the, for somebody to appeal your determination?
No.
So they could, in theory, six months from your determination, make an appeal?
Up to 18 months, because the letter then expires.
Right, unless a property was demolished.
Well, I guess.
If the property is demolished, four months later.
So this really cuts the appellate time off.
So they only have 10 days to appeal your decision?
To notify of appeal.
10 days to submit the letter of intent, I intend to appeal, and then they have 21 days after that letter to submit.
Because I understood it differently.
I did too.
Okay.
It's more stringent. The only issue is there's an openness to this whole thing.
Right, I have no issue with the posting.
No.
My, my issue was I thought you're adding now, you know, that they have 10 days, which wasn't before.
No, no, they can appeal.
Before is unlimited, 18 months. So we're cutting down to 10 days to submit a letter of intent and 21 days to appeal.
To submit a full designation application.
Would you, can they present it the same way?
Any, any motions in order at this point?
If you would
put your, make the same motion again, or if you wish.
I would like to make a motion to vote in favor of this, please. I moved the motion. I rewound and I repeated it, okay?
Rewind and second it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Call the roll again, please.
Chip Withers?
Yes.
Vinnie Torrey?
Yes.
Robert Behar?
Yes.
And AB Eisenstadt?
Yes, well, now I have a clear understanding of it. Thank you.
Craig gets two for two today. You're two for two today.
I'm on a roll.
You're good.
All right.
The bottom line is.
Thank you for the clarification.
Let's go on to G4, please.
Item G4, in ordinance of the city commission providing for a text amendment to the city of Carl Gable's official zoning code by amending Article 14, Process Section 14-204.9, expiration of approvals to eliminate the expiration of certificates of TDR, providing for severability clause, repealer provision, codification, and providing for an effective date. Item G4, public hearing.
I make a motion to approve. Let's take that.
I like that.
I'm going to get up.
We have to ask, you could do that. You don't have to have the, but we do need to see.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
So, so right now, TDRs, the certificate of transfer.
Right.
That historic property gets when they want, they have square feet that are unused development rights to transfer them, that, that expires right now after two years. And I think it's renewed.
Is that once, once they have been designated? Is that what you're saying?
After they've been designated, yes.
Okay.
They're allowed to transfer those development rights that are unused.
Because your transfer development rights never expire.
That, that is the, that's a thought, but however, the zoning code does expire them.
That's what I'm saying, before they've been transferred and designated or just now? I mean, if the.
No, but before they're actually being utilized and put into a, a receiving site.
So, so let's talk about one of my favorite topics, the Carl Gables museum, okay? They have transfer development rights and I thought they've had them for many, many, many years. We just, couple of weeks, couple of meetings ago changed the, the code to reflect that. So are you saying that those transfer development rights available expire or they only expire after they've already been designated?
The certificate itself expires.
I'm sorry?
The certificate itself expires. The unused development rights are always there until they're actually received and built by a property.
So that means you'd have to pay the fees to get the certificate back in? How does that work?
No, I have the ability to, after the two years on the sending site, which is what the museum is, because they are sending their TDRs elsewhere. So we were at the meeting recently and it was approved to send them elsewhere.
So that's when the time starts.
Yeah. If you, if those rights are not transferred after two years, they expire.
And you have to go through the same process again?
The code allows me to.
So it's once it's been designated to be sent, that's when the kind of the time starts.
The code allows me to extend it for six months at the moment, but this would do away with that expiration period.
And, and the receiving side will have still the two years expiration. What happens if a recession comes and the project is delayed for more than two years?
Well, at the moment, that would, I believe, have to go back to the, to the, through the, through the same review process again.
For the receiving site.
For the receiving site, but there would be no requirement to do that for the sending site. Once they've been authorized for transfer, people may wait for the market to go up. They may sit on them for a while.
So somebody else can come if that, if the value changes. There's got, there's a value to those TDRs. So another site can come in and say, you know what? Now that your deal has expired, I'm going to give you $1 more and I'd like to purchase those TDRs.
But that's all done on the, the sort of.
Understood, but that's, I think that's the theory. And then the other question that I have is I assume for a sending site to be able to utilize the TDRs, they have to come up to code, they have to have no violations and so forth.
There's a requirement for.
There's a requirement.
Maintenance plan to be submitted for review by the preservation.
So what happens if, when they get the certificate, they're in compliance and for some reason, five years down the road, they're not in compliance anymore, but they have that right in that certificate? Is there a check or a balance that the city goes back in and before it's done, has to review that property again?
Well, normally for a sending site, they have.
For a sending site, because I assume that the monies that the sending site is also going to get is to upkeep.
That's intent.
And that's the intent.
Normally, or, or a requirement of being able to send TDRs is one, obviously the building has to be historic, but two, they must have a maintenance plan approved by the preservation board. And that will list short-term items that must be done within the next six months and long-term items. How do you propose to maintain this building over the next 10?
Let's say they've done it and they've gotten their certificate and they've complied with everything and the property is beautiful, it's up to code, it's up to date, no violations. Five years down the road, the place has been run down, but they have their certificate in hand to be able to then sell their, those TDRs. Is there a check or balance in place from the city to come back in before that takes place from year two to year five to ensure that it's still in compliance?
Normally, the preservation board require, um, preservation staff go out to the building once a year to just check properties that have transferred their TDRs.
But, but it hasn't been transferred yet. You've issued the certificate, but according to this, it hasn't been transferred yet. It doesn't expire.
In order for them to transfer them, there must be a maintenance plan and part of that maintenance plan is preservation staff go out once a year. So they may not actually transfer them for five years' time, but we would still be required to go out and look at it.
I would just like to make sure that there's something.
I think the question is if, if they fail to maintain as they promised to, is that considered a code violation? Or how is that enforced?
And then do you void the certificate?
And does that negate the certificate until they comply?
I don't believe that has ever happened.
But now it may happen because we're changing it.
But they are required to keep their property maintained regardless of whether it's historic or not.
But it's, the point that the chairman is making is a very good point because today, I'm in compliance, everything's good, there's a certificate issued. Two years later, the property may, you know, go into disrepair or whatever and, and, but you still have that certificate. You could still transfer, sell those TDRs, but there's not a check and balance to make sure that the property is, has been maintained.
But if it's just a code violation.
My just question is if property is in disrepair, isn't that a code violation?
It may not be a code violation. If you don't maintain it completely, it may not be a code violation, you know?
Okay. I, I would just like to see, I think to me, when I reviewed all this, there was something missing between year two to the time that it transferred.
But I think it's, listen, I think, I like the fact that there's no expiration, there's just going to be something, a check and balance to make sure. I, I, I like this, you know?
Yep. That's my only concern.
You have another comment?
So Mario's reminding me that there is a, a covenant that runs with the land with the sending site that requires them to upkeep and maintain the property as they promised they would in the maintenance plan.
Correct.
Who checks that in year three?
Well, again, we are required to go out and look at, inspect the property once a year. So we can go out, preservation staff, if the property's not being maintained, and as Mario said, that there is a covenant that runs with the property and we can say to the property owner, you're not.
So at that point, if it's not being maintained, that certificate could be pulled back.
Can it be pulled back?
I believe so because they're not.
But is there something in place to pull it back on year three?
Can I ask a question? What, what is the instrument? You know the answer. What is the instrument that is transferred for money at year three? What is the instrument that somebody would say, okay, great, let me have it and I'm going to give you the money? Is, is it, is it a certificate? And that certificate alone is the value? Does it have any other recorded?
Well, let's, why don't we do something? Because Mario's from the public. Are you done with your presentation at this point? Okay. Jill, do we have any speakers? We have one gentleman that would like to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mario Garcia Serra with the offices at 600 Brickell Avenue. Here sincerely as a member of the public, but, but there's only been a handful of TDR transactions that have happened. I've been involved in some of them. There's a private component too that, you know, I think you're, you're asking about right now. And to your direct question, Mr. Torrey, at the time of the closing on the TDRs, there is a TDR deed that's executed saying we're transferring these development rights from here to here. The city also requires that the sender site have entered into a covenant tying it to that stabilization and maintenance plan that Warren and his staff are then reviewing or going to inspect every year to make sure that the property's being properly maintained. And, you know, at this point, I think what's being proposed is something practical. You know, these sender sites, usually smaller historic properties, it's a bit of a burden to go get this sender site approval. They get the sender site approval, they've gone through the expense of stabilization and maintenance plan, attorneys, city processing and fees. They want to be able to continue to have that right and not necessarily lose it after, after two years. And so the idea here, I think, is to try to make this a little more user-friendly by the purposes of the sending site.
Can I ask Mario a question? Please. In the covenant, is there a provision if you fail to comply with the requirements of this covenant, what happens?
If you fail to comply with the requirements of the covenant and the transfer have, has not taken place, I guess you could then invalidate the certificate of transfer. If the transfer has taken place already, then it becomes a code violation. They're not complying with the stabilization and maintenance plan.
I asked that question because the key word that you said is at the time of sale, that this all takes place. But in this case now, it's not, there isn't going to be a time of sale.
Right, but that, if the sale has, if the transfer of TDRs has not happened and you're in violation of the stabilization and maintenance plan, that could be grounds for invalidating your certificate of TDRs. If you're past that point, then, and the TD, and the TDRs have already been sent to the receiver site, it could then constitute a code violation. You're violating a covenant that you've entered into with the city and, and so you're subject now to fines.
And code violation, I can understand because that's the way it's been. My, just like I said, my concern is after year two and there's been no sale.
And, and you think that there's a provision in the covenant that says failure to comply with the requirements may terminate your.
And that's really essentially your check and balance.
We'd have to take, we'd have to take a look at the form covenant. This has only been done two or three times.
If the form covenant doesn't say that, of course, the board could make a recommendation that it should have it in there.
So here's a question that would answer your, your concerns. Is the city involved in the action, involved, present in any way, shape, attached to the deed transfer? Does the city need to be at that?
No, no one is going to, no one is going to close on a transaction unless we have a certificate of TDRs saying.
Which has gotten at that particular point in time? It doesn't, something you put in the file? Is it something, and my question is, is you're going to go to close? You grab your paper from the file and you just.
But you have to come to the city.
You have to call the city and say, I'm going to take care of this, make sure this is, the covenant has to be fulfilled and all that. Isn't that an involvement by the city at that time?
Right, the city has to sign off on the covenant also.
Wouldn't that be the time for you to check whether this thing is in, in disrepair?
Meaning if it's three years down the road?
Yes, and, and again, as part of.
That's it, that's it. You, you do have a.
So you do have a.
And as, and as part of approval of the maintenance plan, which is required, the board have been asking us to go out once a year just to check that these properties are maintained.
Before we continue a second, we are close. Is there a motion?
No, we, we're going to finish this.
We're going to be finished.
We have two, two more items.
We made a motion.
I second your motion.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'm sorry.
Robert, is the motion to approve?
Yes.
Robert made a motion to approve. Uh, hold on. Jill, do we have anybody else?
No.
Anybody on Zoom?
No.
Anybody on phone platform?
No.
At this time, we'll go ahead and close it for public comment.
I need to know who made the motion and who seconded it.
Uh, the motion was made by Mr. Behar and seconded by Mr. Withers.
Thank you.
Any discussion? No, call the roll, please.
Vinnie Torrey?
Yes.
Chip Withers?
Yep.
Robert Behar?
Yes.
ABS and stuff.
Yes.
Is that it?
Jennifer?
Okay.
We got, I'm sorry, G5, Mr. Call.
Item G5, in ordinance to the city commission, Carl Gables, Florida, providing for a text amendment to the city of Carl Gables official zoning code by amending Article 15 notices to include mail notice to all properties within the applicable mailing distance provided for severability clause repealer provision codification providing for an effective date. Item G5, public hearing.
So this is another commission sponsored.
Can you state your name and position?
Yes, Jennifer Garcia, city planner. This is another text amendment sponsored by the commission and it's adding in two sentences into our Article 15 notices and saying all required mail notice will be sent to the property address and the mailing address for the Miami-Dade County Property Appraisers website. If the web, if the address is the same for both, then only one notice must be sent. So right now, property owners get the notice. This is going to increase that to go to the property itself.
And whoever's, if there's a tenant on the property, they will get it as well.
Correct, yes.
We may, I may, I want to make a motion to extend.
Just, okay, go ahead.
Extend the meeting for 15 minutes in case we, in case we need it.
14 minutes?
14 minutes in case.
We have a motion to extend for 14 minutes? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Vinnie seconds?
We can do a voice vote.
Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead, please.
Other questions? I mean, that's, that's the extent.
No. Uh, do we have anybody, Jill, do we have anybody for this item?
No.
Either chambers, Zoom or phone platform?
No.
Okay, at this point, we'll go ahead and close it for public comment. Mr. Behar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm, I'm okay and I, the way it should be where the property owner gets the notification. Why are we now involving a tenant of a, you know, that is leasing a property to get notification? What's, what's the intent or the, you know, the benefit doing that?
I think that the intent is to provide more notice, probably for the commercial properties since most of those are, are not owner occupied, as well as probably the rental properties.
Let me, let me go. But just to be clear, it's not notice to a tenant.
Yes.
It's notice to the property. So if there's a, sometimes on the property appraisers list, it'll show a mailing address different than the property address because the bill is going to a different place. All this requires is that the, that a mailing be sent to that physical address. Whether the tenant gets it or doesn't get it is not a requirement. Presumably a tenant.
So the mailing, so the mailing notice will be to the owner's name at the property address?
No, it'll go to the owner's name at their address.
And also.
The mailing address and the property.
But if it's different.
If it's different.
Right, only if it's different.
Right, but the property, but the property address will also have the owner's name.
No, I think it'll just say current resident.
Okay, so, so let me, so let me give, let me give you, let me give you an example. I've got, I live in an apartment building that I'm renting. It's a commercial property. I know it's being sold or it's been sold and I know they want to knock it down. I'm going to get this notice and I'm going to come here and I'm, and I'm going to say, you know, I'm not in agreement because I rent there, I live there, and if you knock it down, I don't have where to go or I'm paying $1,000 a month. And if you knock it down, I'm going to have to go pay $1,800 a month.
Well, currently, the affected property of any project is required to be posted, so.
Okay.
So they should already be notified that, that something's going to happen.
Posted on the property?
Mm-hmm, right.
Okay, I didn't know the process.
Yeah. This is just adding a mailing to that, to both the affected property and within the thousand-foot radius.
Well, currently, the affected property of any project is required to be posted, so.
Okay.
So they should already be notified that, that something's gonna happen?
Posted on the property?
Mm-hmm, right.
Okay, I didn't know the process.
Yeah. This is just adding a mailing to that, to both the affected property and within the 1,000-foot radius.
But here's the question. So you said something different. So it's ABC Corporation owns the property. You send it to ABC Corporation in Tallahassee. And then you're gonna say current resident as opposed to ABC Corporation at Merrill O'Mile? It's gonna say current resident?
Or, or whatever we decide.
It won't say the name of the corporation as well?
No, no, it'll say.
So somebody wouldn't say, hey, this is not mine, and pass it up to the owner? They would say, I gotta open the letter.
It's junk mail, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but it's.
But why not? When you post, don't you post to the current owner? Or do you post to all residents?
When we post it for an affected property, like, we're not posting, you know, 1,000-foot radius reflecting the property.
But if you post the affected property, do you title it?
Yeah, we say what the request is, what the address is, the, the application number, and the date of the public hearing.
So it's staked on the property, correct?
Right, on the property.
So if somebody's on the property, presumably, they'll see it.
They should know, yes.
This is just an additional mail notice to, I guess, current occupant.
To that, okay.
It might not be a resident.
Yeah, that's better.
The occupant, the owner may not want the occupant to know, but we're gonna notify the occupant.
Well, it will be to that, that affected property and the properties within the 1,000-foot radius.
To all residents.
Not just the affected property.
Man, what's the cost of this? Has anyone calculated that?
I think the argument was that this has been done by the applicant, for most mailings, it's done by the applicant, right.
It's another burden.
But I mean, I really think you should have a name on it, instead of just current resident.
So do I. I think it should be the property owners. In other words.
Well, it is, it does have the property owner, but understand, you don't have a name on the property appraisers list. You don't have tenants. That's not disclosed necessarily, unless it's a 99-year lease, where the property appraiser considers the person to be the owner. So you will never know who is the, necessarily the tenant on that property, because it's not in the property appraisers listing.
I don't want the tenant's name, I want the owner's name of the property.
No, well, the owner's name, it will be mailed to the owner. If, if the owner is at that address, then there's only one mailing.
Understand that.
If the owner lives in Tallahassee, which was the example, then you get owner's name in Tallahassee, and you get occupant at this address, or whatever they wanna put. It'll be delivered to that address.
To, to your, to your point, if you put the name of the owner both times, it works when you have one tenant, one entity. But if you do have multiple.
Say you got a 20-unit building.
That's where the, that's where you can't use the owner's name, because you're gonna send the owner's name 20 times?
No, you're, and you're.
But it'll be apartment 101, apartment 102.
The, 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 the way that's drafted, it will go to the property. So one letter to the property.
Property manager office.
No, 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 it goes to that, to that mailbox for that unit, one through 20.
Everything on.
It goes, if there's 20 units, it's gonna be 20 mailings.
No, we don't, we don't have information on property appraisers.
No, it may not have, you may not have the units.
So isn't it better to post?
Well, I'll give you an example. Let's say you have a condominium.
For the affected property, it's better to post.
If you have a condominium, every unit is owned, and there's a, an address for the property. That address may not be at the unit. They may, they may, so, so you have a mailing to the owner at a completely different address, and you have, because the property appraisers office shows a unit number and an address, the mailing would go there, as I understand it.
Okay.
But you do have situations where it's not a condominium. You don't know who's in the building, it's just gonna go to the building.
And, and, excuse me one second, then the property that is 200 feet away is getting notification to those property, because you're within 1,000, right? So anybody that is, not even an owner, is getting notification.
And, and it's being staked on the property, so presumably, somebody walking on the property trips over the stake, they know that there's notice there.
It, it's gonna either be used to wrap fish or put in the bottom of a birdcage, because, I doubt very seriously, a property manager getting current resident, he's just gonna toss that target.
Well, but the current resident may see, what is this?
Who is it? Yeah.
And, and you're putting the more burden on the property that is responsible to sell, to send out all this mail, this, you know, for, for what reason? I, I don't get it. If it's.
But I will, I will move it.
We have a motion?
Yep.
To approve as stated?
Just to see where it goes. Otherwise, we're gonna have to extend it for another four minutes.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Maybe it'll die because of a second.
I don't think. Sure, I'll, I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second.
See what happens. We get Craig some more work.
Any comment? Call the roll, please.
Robert Behar?
Nope.
Vinnie Torrey?
Yes.
Chip Withers?
Yes.
A.B. Assisette?
No.
I don't think we're gonna break this time, so.
I'm not gonna try to work on it.
This is, I'm not gonna go for three for three.
So tie vote? No recommendation.
All right.
I make a motion to adjourn.
The only motion that's in order is a motion to adjourn.
I did, motion to adjourn.
We did pretty good, though. We came back from two, from two a.m. now.
Yeah.
See you all December 14.
Got two, two. You know, Vinnie and I were, Vinnie and I were on the fence twice tonight, and we were able to, we reversed. But this time, these guys just dug in, didn't they?
I will not be here.